Good afternoon and welcome. I'd like to welcome everyone to the July 9th Planning Commission hearing. My name is Holly Quayar, and I'm the Chair of the Commission. All Commissioners are present except for District Number 10, which we currently have a vacancy. We'll be waiting for that new appointment, and we look forward to welcoming our new member. We do have a new member here today representing District 5. I'd like to officially welcome Catherine Schoonover and thank her for volunteering to serve on this commission. She will serve for the unexpired term through 2027 of her former Commissioner George Alcarez. Before we get started, I've asked Commissioner Beiler to lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Hippen. If you could please join me and stand.
Our Heavenly Father, we look to the heavens to give thanks and to ask for divine guidance. Thank you for the big, beautiful, full moon this week and for the beauty of the skies that declare your greatness. Thank you for both the opportunity and the responsibility that comes from living in Virginia Beach, where we enjoy the oceans, the rivers, parks, and wildlife. Thank you for the privilege of living in a country that ensures us the freedom of speech and the right to participate. Please grant us wisdom and decorum to receive and respect diverse opinions. May we never take for granted the blessing of self-government and the opportunity to have our voices heard. Amen.
At this time, we'll introduce the members of the Commission. We'll be starting to my right with our counsel.
Tori Eisenberg, Deputy City Attorney.
Michael Mach, the pleasure of serving the city as the at-large representative.
Walter Kemp, representing District 1, Kempsville area.
John Cromwell, District 2, Punggol and Blackwater.
Hi, Mike Anderson, District 3.
Catherine Beiler, District 4, which is the greater town center area, all the way up to Newtown Road in the north of Porter.
Holly Quayar, District 8.
John Costin, District 9.
Catherine Schoonover, District 5.
Brian Plumley, Beautiful District 6, from historic Sea Tag to the north end of Virginia Beach.
Susan Hippen, District 7, Salem and College Park.
Caitlin Alcock, Planning Administrator. Clerking to my left, we have Kristen Bauer and Alexis Bailey. In the audience, we have Deputy Planning Director Carrie Bookhold with our Planning Administration team. We have Marcel Coleman and Mike Hayes. We have our Zoning Administrator Kevin Kemp, Deputy Zoning Administrator Brandon Hackney. With planning staff, we have Aubreacher Bilcock and Madison Eichols. And then with IT support, we have Rachel LeVere and Faith Velaskis.
Thank you very much. At this time, if I could please ask the clerk to read our rules of order and procedure.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the Commission normally conducts its meetings. It is equally important that everyone treat each other and the members of the Commission with respect and civility. We request that cell phones be put on silent during this meeting. This is an abbreviated explanation of the rules. The complete set of rules is located in the front of the Planning Commission Agenda. Following is the Order of Business for this public hearing. Withdrawals and deferrals. The chairperson will ask if there are any requests to withdraw or defer an item on the agenda. Consideration of these requests will be made first. Consent Agenda. The second order of business is the consideration of the consent agenda, which are those items that the Planning Commission believe are unopposed and which have favorable staff recommendation. Regular Agenda. The Commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. When an agenda item has been called, we will recognize the applicant or their representative first. Following the applicant or their representative, in-person speakers will be called next, and then the speakers participating via WebEx. Speakers in support or opposition of an agenda item will have three minutes to speak per item, unless they are solely representing a large group such as a civic league or homeowners association, in which case they will have 10 minutes per item. If a speaker does not respond, or if a technical issue occurs which renders the comments unintelligible, we will move on to the next speaker or the next order of business. Please note that the actions taken by the Commission today are in the form of a recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. The final decision to approve or disapprove an application will be made by the City Council. The Commission thanks you for your attendance, and we hope that your experience here today leaves you feeling that you have been heard and treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I'd also like to congratulate Kristen Bauer and thank her for her service as our clerk. She's just recently been promoted within the Planning Department to Planner Number 1, and we're grateful that she's sharing her talents with the City of Virginia Beach. So, thank you very much, Kristen. Next, we have a special recognition before we start our official business. As is the case when you are serving here on the Commission, life changes happen or your term expires, and we'd like to recognize two really special Commissioners who are here today. First, I'm going to ask Willie Parks if he would please come to the podium. And Commissioner Anderson has some remarks on behalf of the Commission.
Willie, on behalf of the Planning Commission, I'd like to, well, I'd like to ask Willie to come to the podium. I should have read it earlier. Willie served District 10 with distinction from February 21st, 2023, to May 14th, 2025. During his two-year tenure, Willie was an active listener, strategic thinker, and engaging member of the Commission. As a profession, he is an architect. Willie's keen insight into the development and construction industries allowed him a unique lens of field knowledge and building. His area of specific interest, and specifically in sea level rise and resilience design, was the perfect pairing for the unique challenges that the city of Virginia Beach faces in our coastal area. We are grateful for the time, though short-lived, that Willie's talent shared with the Planning Commission, and wish him and his family all the best as they move into their new home in District 2. And I hope to see you on the golf course soon. Several times. Please accept.
We have a gift, Marcel Coleman. We have a gift for you.
Oh, there she is. And any comments you'd like to say?
I just want to say thanks to all of you guys. It was a great two years. It was definitely cut short, but my family, we needed to do the move for us. But I do hope to come back, and I'm happy to have my new role with the Housing Advisory Board, so I hope I can help serve you guys that way. And like I've always said, if there's any opportunity to come back, I'm happy to help either consulting or if I can make my way back. It's a lot different on this side of the podium than that.
Thank you so much, Willie. Any other Commissioners would they also make a remark? Thanks so much for coming out today.
Willie, it's lonely in this corner.
Okay, next, I'm going to ask our Vice Chair, John Costin, for our next special recognition.
First, on behalf of the Commission, we're going to ask if Mr. George Alcarez will come to the podium, please.
I'm in uniform.
George served District 5 with distinction from January 1st, 2019, through June 12th, 2025. During his six-and-a-half-years tenure, George served as a member, vice-chair for one year, and chairman of the Commission for two years, and the Commission liaison to the Stormwater Advisory Group. I kind of leave script here now for a few minutes because I've known George a lot longer than this. George was a member of the zoning staff when I met him, and I was over at the Fire Marshal's Office. And I thought that was George, but as I was inspecting a restaurant one day, and I'm talking to the owner, I think who's the owner, I believe it's his dad, he was the retired Master Chief in Waukesha, Georgia, and we have a long conversation and a little lunch together, and we've kind of been bonded ever since then. He does so much for the city. He works, I think he's given up the surfboarding thing, but he does so much, always interested in what's going on in the city. He's been an asset to not only the city, but this Commission and to all of our citizens. We are grateful for your time and talent, George, that you shared with us, and we wish you all the best, and we hope that we'll see you at the oceanfront. And we have a gift for you also. And welcome to the mic.
Well, thank you, John. I appreciate that, and all of you Commissioners, and congrats to your appointment. I had fun. I had, it was a great time meeting every one of you, and I'm going to miss being part of the growth and the guidance of the growth, but I, it was hard to take that, to back out, but I moved, and I'm going to be in District 6, so look out, Plumley. No, I'm just kidding. I'll find someplace. But I, and I thank every one of you, and you're doing a good job, Holly. Good job, all of you. I'm really glad to meet all of you. I hope to see you. I do want to say a special thanks to Kathy, she's not here, but to her leaders, Caitlin, Kevin, and Carrie. What the change that I've seen the past three years is awesome, so to you guys, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Like we share with everyone, you're welcome to stay for the entirety of the hearing, or please be excused and enjoy the rest of this day. So, thank you both. The next order of business is the consideration of our request to withdraw or to defer an item. Please come forward if you have any items to be withdrawn. Seeing none, next would be for any deferrals.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Rob Beeman, local land use attorney with the Trotman Pepperlot Law Firm here today on behalf of the applicant for Number 9. We'd like to request a 30-day deferral to continue public outreach efforts for this application. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We're in receipt of your letter. Are there any objections to this item being on the deferral? Any additional deferrals?
Madam Chair, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing Brykel LLC, Case Number 14. We have also been engaged with the community and asked for a 30-day deferral to continue that engagement to the August public hearing.
Thank you very much. Are there any objections to this item being deferred?
Madam Chair, we have one speaker.
Pardon me?
We have one speaker, Martha Thoreau.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Thoreau. Yes, is this in reference to the deferral, Madam Clerk? Yes. That's quite all right. Welcome. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you, Martha Thoreau. I didn't get the memo that it was being deferred, but I wanted to come down for this event today anyhow, so it was just as well. My two issues on the development of this property, from R-75 to Apartments 24.
Ms. Thoreau, I am grateful that you're here, and I understand, but we really need to keep this germane to the deferral. Are you objecting to the deferral?
Oh, okay.
Or for the application?
To the application.
So, as a point of order, we're just right now, as your main topic, would you be, are you objecting only to the application?
I'm objecting to items within the application of, and would like to get on the record, since I drove from Shore Drive to here not knowing that this was going to be deferred. Could I just share? Because Mr. Burdon, otherwise known as Eddie, might want to take it into consideration when he's working things up for community engagement.
Absolutely. We respect your time. I just wanted to be fair for the Commissioners, since Ms. Thoreau has come down today not recognizing a deferral, if it would please the Commission to go ahead and allow her to speak in opposition to it.
Thank you.
Okay.
You good with that, Attorney?
Okay, so we're going to start right now. Let's give her her full three minutes.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
So, I lived over there, right by this property, for 17 years. I'm from this area. I grew up Bay Lake Pines from 1955, which is adjacent to Chesapeake Beach, and I lived in Chesapeake Beach for 17 years. I'm very familiar with Pleasure House Road, and very familiar with the developments going on over there. Windsong Apartments being the big deal that happened a few years ago that shouldn't have happened for density. But the big issue here is the, it's going to happen. Nothing I'm going to say is going to change it. Mr. Large is going to get his permit because Mr. Large is well-connected with the city, and he's going to get to tear down this property and build multiple units on that property. Career is in real estate, still licensed, since '77, so I'm not stupid. Pleasure House Road was a two-lane road then. It was in 1955, and it still is today. It doesn't have near the houses that it, or didn't have near the houses or development that it does today. Our traffic engineer, who works for the citizens, even though some think that they work for the developers, they actually work for us who pay them. And the fact of the matter is, traffic is worse. It's like logical, it would be worse with the density over there. Therefore, anything said on the traffic matter is wrong. It is a busy road, it is a dangerous road. It doesn't have sidewalks halfway down, it has sidewalks, it has ditches. So, the density is huge. The other thing, I was at the Bayfront Advisory Committee meeting when the developer, the builder, came and visited for his rubber stamp on this matter, and he mentioned that he is not going to plant trees because people just cut them down anyway. So, I think Virginia Beach might want to get off of the Tree City USA status because they're cutting down trees everywhere, and why this guy cannot put trees on this property is beside the point. It's like, they cut them down? The city is being destroyed, piece by piece, tree by tree, and I hope Mr. Burdon, otherwise known as Eddie, will take all of what I say into account. I do not believe Chesapeake Beach is on board with this. I know the people in the community in that area, and despite what they said at the Bayfront Advisory Committee, I find it hard to believe that the Chesapeake Beach citizens are just fine with all of this. So, thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, and thank you also recognizing that sometimes deferrals do happen at the last minute, and so we did want to value your time today. So, thank you very much. Do I have any other deferral requests? We do have a letter on file for agenda items Number 16 and 17, and it's my understanding that the applicant is unable to be with us today, but there is a letter on file requesting that deferral. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers?
There are no other speakers at this time.
Thank you very much. There are requests for application numbers 9, 14, 16, and 7 to be on the, to be deferred. Do I have a motion from the Commission?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Is each deferral request for 30 days for each one? I just want to make sure, because I would like to make a motion to defer them.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. The request is for 30 days for all of the items.
That would move to defer Item 9, Item 14, and 16 and 17, which are, I think, a joint application.
That is correct.
To be deferred 30 days.
I second that motion.
So, I have a motion by Commissioner Plumley, seconded by Commissioner Beiler. Is there any further discussion? Just waiting for the vote here. The vote is open.
By a recorded vote, 10 to 0. Items Number 9, CF4FS LLC, Item 14, Brickell LLC, and Items 16 and 17, Mark and Summer Brown, have been recommended for a 30-day deferral.
Okay, thank you very much. The next order of business is the consent agenda, and I'm going to turn that over to our Vice Chair to perform that section of our meeting.
The first item, Madam Chair, today we have 15 items on the consent agenda. These are applications that are recommended for approval by staff, and the Planning Commission concur. There are no speakers signed up in opposition. The first item that we shall hear is the reading of our minutes, the approval of our minutes, and we've asked Commissioner Kemp to read these into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. This item is for approval of the draft minutes, the following six Planning Commission meetings, as corrected, and with the abstentions to be noted. The formal hearing, April 9th, 2025, revising the previously approved version of the minutes, with an abstention by Commissioner Schoonover, as she was not yet appointed at the time of the meeting. The meeting of May 14th, 2025, formal hearing, again with Commissioner Schoonover's abstention. The Comprehensive Plan Workshop, held on May 21st, 2025, again with Commissioner Schoonover abstaining. The informal and formal hearings that were held on June 11th, 2025, with Commissioner Anderson abstaining because he was not present, and Commissioner Schoonover, as she was not yet appointed. And lastly, the minutes of the site visit, held on July 3rd, 2025, with Commissioner Plumley abstaining as he was not a participant in the site visit.
Thank you, sir, for reading those items for us. The next item on our agenda is Item Number 1, City of Virginia Beach. Do we have someone to represent? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Members of the Commission. For the record, Kevin Kemp, Zoning Administrator for the City of Virginia Beach. Item 1 is a text amendment to modify Section 104 of the zoning ordinance pertaining to violations to the short-term rental ordinance. What this text amendment would do, it would make STR violations a criminal misdemeanor. Currently, they are a civil penalty. They initially were criminal, they changed to civil in 2020. This change would make them criminal again and would be consistent with all other zoning violations, with the exception of signage. Staff recommends approval of this text amendment.
Thank you, sir. I guess we'll move on to the next one, then, year number three.
Yes, sir. Again, for the record, Kevin Kemp, Zoning Administrator for the City of Virginia Beach. Item 3 is a text amendment, also to amend Section 104 of the zoning ordinance pertaining to civil penalties. Specifically, this amendment would align our zoning ordinance with recently adopted legislation from the General Assembly. The proposed changes would allow for increased fines for convictions related to violations involving the storage or disposal of non-agricultural excavation material, water, and debris, and repeat offenders for short-term rental properties within multifamily purposes. Additionally, it would require a person who admits liability for a violation involving multifamily purpose to abate the remedy within six months. We are recommending approval of this ordinance as it will provide consistency with recently adopted state legislation.
Thank you again, sir. Item 4.
For the record, Kevin Kemp, Zoning Administrator, City of Virginia Beach. Item 4 is an ordinance to amend Section 106 of the zoning ordinance pertaining to the appeal period for notices of violation. This, again, would align our ordinance with recently adopted state legislation. The zoning ordinance currently requires a 30-day appeal period for notice of violation, unless it is specifically noted. Otherwise, what this amendment would do, would it would include the storage or disposal of non-agricultural excavation material, waste, and debris, as one of these exceptions, and therefore they would be subject to a 10-day appeal period. We are recommending approval of this text amendment as it will be consistent with state legislation.
Thank you, sir. Item 5.
For the record, Kevin Kemp, Zoning Administrator, City of Virginia Beach. Item 5 is an ordinance to amend Appendix C of the City Code, which is to update references to the State Code and the Erosion and Stormwater Management Ordinance. Specifically, these updates would be related to the applicable review time and criteria for site plans. It would also update references and the definition of agricultural use. It would extend the time period following a site plan to secure a building permit or commence the use of land. This time period has changed from 180 days to five years. It would also allow for a one-year extension of that period of validity instead of 90 days, as previously in the State Code. Staff recommends approval to provide consistency with recently adopted state legislation.
Thank you, sir. Item 6.
For the record, Kevin Kemp, Zoning Administrator, City of Virginia Beach. Item 6 is an ordinance to amend Appendix B of the City Code, which upstates references to the State Code and the Erosion Stormwater Management Ordinance. Specifically, it is in regards to review timelines and criteria for subdivision plats. It extends the period of validity for an approved preliminary subdivision plat to five years, so long as the subdivider submits a final plat within one year of the preliminary plat approval, and diligently pursues approval of the final subdivision plat. Staff recommends approval of this ordinance as it will provide consistency with recently adopted state legislation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is Item 7. Kevin L. Sullivan Trust, property owner, for subdivision variance. Is there a representative? Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Lawrence Sullivan.
Thank you. Are the, are the proffers acceptable to you?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you.
Is there any objection to this item being placed on the consent agenda? There being none, we've asked Commissioner Cromwell to read this item into the record.
The subject property, known as Lot 8A1, was legally created by a resolution plat recorded on April 15th of 2022. Lot 8A1 is approximately 36 acres and is located within the AG1 and AG2 agricultural zoning districts. Lot 8A1 meets all standards of the zoning ordinance. The applicant seeks to subdivide Lot 8A1 into two single-family lots. Seeing there are no speakers, and up in approval of staff, we recommend this for the consent agenda.
Thank you. Next item is Item Number 8. Andrea Morris, property owner, for modification of conditions. Please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, I'm Andrea Morris.
Are the proffers acceptable to you?
Yes.
Thank you. You may be seated. Is there any objection to this item being placed on the consent agenda? There being none, we've asked Commissioner Anderson to read this item into the record.
Thank you, Vice Chair. On April 2nd, 2024, City Council approved a conditional use permit for an outdoor recreational facility to operate a 40,000-square-foot inflatable park on this 2.8-acre B2 community business district zone parcel located within the suburban area. The applicant seeks to modify the condition, Number 4, of the 2024 conditional use permit, which currently restricts operation of the inflatable park to the months of March through September. The applicant is requesting to extend the operational period to include October and With the approval from staff, we put it on the consent agenda.
Thank you, sir. The next item on our agenda is Item 10. Hall of Virginia Beach Auto Properties, Virginia Beach, modification of conditions.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of Planning Commission and Staff. For the record, my name is Lisa Murphy. I'm a local zoning attorney with Wilcox Savage, here today on behalf of Hall of Virginia Beach 6 LLC, which trades as Hall Toyota Virginia Beach. We concur with the 15 conditions that staff has proposed for this modification of conditions application. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? You may be seated. Thank you. Is there any objection to this item being placed on the consent agenda? There being none, we have asked Commissioner Plumley to read this item into the record.
Thank you, Vice Chair. This is an application by Hall of Virginia Beach 6 LLC Auto Properties. The location is 1875 and 1877 Laskin Road. It's the parcel directly south of 621 Village Drive. The applicant is requesting modification to its existing conditional use permit for motor sales and service to add an additional 2.47-acre parcel, Zone B2 Community Business, for the Zone B2 Community Business, for the purpose of expanding the area for the storage of vehicles. There being no objection noted, the commission was in agreement to place this as a consent item, and there has been no objection.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item 11, Virginia Beach Residences LLC Property Owner, modification of proffers. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Madam Chair, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Rob Beeman, a local land use attorney with the Troutman Pepperlock Law Firm, here today on behalf of the applicant for number 11. We've had a chance to review the proffered conditions, and we concur with them, and we appreciate being on the consent agenda. Thank you very much.
Is there any objection to this item being placed on the consent agenda? There being none, we've asked Commissioner Byler to read this into the record.
This is an approximate 14.6-acre site. Previously, it was rezoned, or there was an application for 524-unit multifamily. The current project is for 375-unit multifamily. The site is located within the Burton Station Strategic Growth Area, specifically within the North Hampton Diamond Springs Baker Road Corridor Development Focus Area. The vision for this area emphasizes the creation of a pedestrian-friendly, walkable district with convenient access to businesses via streets, bus stops, sidewalks, and adjacent structures. The Burton Station SGA Master Plan supports the buildings of up to five stories in height with mixed use, including retail, restaurant, office, hotel, limited residential, while reserving a significant portion of land for open space, recreation, and stormwater management. The current application contributes to the city's need for housing and enhances the corridor by removing a long-abandoned unfinished sports complex that has remained vacant for over a decade. There being no opposition, it appears appropriate for the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Jeffrey and Karen Barrett, property owners, conditional use permit for residential kennel.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, we have speakers on that item, so I believe we'd need to switch it over to the regular agenda.
Okay. So we'll call you back when we get to the... It's been moved to the regular agenda. So then, let's see, here in 19. Next item on our agenda is item 11, LeVar Hyman, property owner, conditional use permit for car wash facility.
Thank you.
Please state your name for the record.
LeVar Hyman.
Have you reviewed the proffers, and are they acceptable to you?
Yes.
Thank you. You may be seated. Is there any objection to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we've asked Commissioner Anderson to read this item into the record. Twenty.
Number 20.
Okay.
That's okay.
The applicant seeks a conditional use permit to operate a car wash facility for hand washing and detailing business in a 2,200-square-foot suite within an existing commercial condominium on this B2 community business zone parcel. On April 15th, 2025, a zoning complaint was opened for the operation of a car wash facility without a conditional use permit, which led to the subject application being filed. The car wash facility proposed will be a limited operation that will take place in front of the suite's garage bay door. Vehicles will be hand washed one at a time using a pH-neutral soap and minimal water utilization, utilizing a water reclaimation system. Additionally, the applicant will place a removable absorption sock on the stormwater drain in the parking lot to the left of the suite to prevent runoff from directly entering the stormwater system untreated. After vehicles are washed, they undergo exterior and interior dwellings. With no objections, we put this on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Our next item is Tent Daddy of Virginia Beach, conditional use permit.
Thank you. My name is Alex Akultry.
Are the conditions acceptable to you?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you.
Is there any objection to this item being placed on the consent agenda?
Mr. Vice Chair, I believe we have a modification to a condition. I just want to make sure that he puts it on the record that he's okay with it, and I'll read in what that is. If you don't mind, just step back up. I apologize. For condition three, it read, "All motor vehicles maintained and repaired shall only take place inside the designated unit at 4912 Rutherford Road, Suite 101." And we're going to change that to say, "All maintenance and repair activities, which shall be limited to the window tinning services only, shall be conducted exclusively within the designated unit at 4912 Rutherford Road, Suite 101." Is that acceptable to you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Any objection to this item being placed on the consent agenda? There being none, we've asked Commissioner March to read this into the record.
Thank you. Agenda item number 22 is for Tent Daddy of Virginia Beach LLC, located at 4912 Rutherford Road, Suite 101. Tent Daddy is requesting a conditional use permit to operate an automobile repair garage within existing 1,250-square-foot suite on this B2 community business zone parcel. Specifically, Tent Daddy is proposing to operate an automobile window tinning service, which involves the application of protective film to vehicle windows for the purpose such as heat reduction, privacy, and aesthetic enhancement. There's no outside storage proposed, as business operations will be conducted within the building. The commission is in agreement with noting the modification of condition number three. Staff's opinion that this request for a conditional use permit for an automobile garage is acceptable. And for that, we put this on the consent agenda. Hearing no opposition.
Thank you. Our next item is item 23, Melinda Lyon, property owner, conditional use permit for short-term rental. Is there a representative? Okay. Is there any objection to this item being placed on the consent agenda?
I'm sorry. I wasn't able to unmute myself. I'm on WebEx, Melinda Lyon.
Are the conditions acceptable to you?
Yes, sir.
Is there any objection to this item being placed on the consent agenda? There being none, we've asked Commissioner Plumlee to read this into the record.
This is an application by the property owner, Melinda Lyon, for short-term rental at 304 28th Street, Unit 210. The conditional use permit comports with the city's regulation. It's been recommended for approval by staff, and there is no objection. And that's why it was placed on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Our next item is item 25, Debbie Anderson, property owner, conditional use permit for short-term rental. Please state your name, please.
Debbie Anderson.
Are the conditions acceptable to you?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. You may be seated. Is there any objection to this item being placed on the consent agenda? There being none, we've asked Commissioner Plumlee to read this item into the record.
This item 25 is for applicant Debbie Anderson. The location is 2113 Atlantic Avenue, Unit 6B. They're seeking a conditional use permit for short-term rental at that address. And it comports, according to staff report, to the local city ordinance. Received recommendation of the staff, and there's no objection. Therefore, it was placed on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that was the last item on the consent agenda. The Planning Commission places the following applications on the consent agenda. The minutes, items one, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, 10, 11, 20, 22, 23, and 25.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve by consent, as read by the vice chair?
Move to approve.
I have a move. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Plumlee, a second by Commissioner Byler. Are there any commissioners abstaining from the consent agenda? Hearing none, any further discussion? The vote is open. By a recorded vote of 10 to 0, all aforementioned minutes with all aforementioned abstentions, items one, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, 10, 11, 20, 22, 23, and 25, have been recommended for approval by consent. Thank you very much. If you've had an application that was on the consent agenda, your request will now be scheduled at an upcoming city council meeting. Staff will contact you about the date. For those applicants on the consent agenda, thank you for participating today, and you may remain seating for the remainder of the meeting, either virtually or in person. But of course, you're free to leave as well. The next order of business is the regular agenda. Madam Clerk, we're ready for our first item.
Our first item is item number two, City of Virginia Beach.
Thank you, commissioners. For the record, Kevin Kemp, zoning administrator for the City of Virginia Beach. Item two also deals with the recommendations of the Short-Term Rental Enforcement Task Force. This addresses... They had 20 recommendations in total. Six of them have come before you today. The first was item one. The other five are included in this text amendment. Specifically addressed in the amendment, it allows property manager owners contact information to be required on the signage, as well as allowing additional signage on the site. It would allow Class A and B contractors to perform safety inspections and would decrease the frequency to once every five years. It would allow attestations for the registration and renewal process in years when inspections were not required. And it would revise the parking requirement for both grandfathered properties and all short-term rentals. Currently, the short-term rental parking requirement is one space per bedroom. This revision would change it to one space per every two bedrooms for STRs for grandfathered properties. They would be required to have the number of parking spaces that were required when the dwelling was constructed, provided there is a minimum of one space on the site. That is the amendment as it's brought forward, this version. It is up for your discussion to make any changes. As far as the amendment, that will be brought forward to City Council for a formal vote. Stand by for questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Kemp? Commissioner Kemp?
I was...
I'm sorry. I wasn't sure if you had a question. I just saw your light on.
Yeah, I did not have a question, but I'm ready when you are.
I'd like to open up the floor, then, for discussion and entertain a motion.
So, Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to put this on the floor for discussion. The staff has chosen to combine multiple items into a single vote, adding a great deal of complexity to the discussion of this item. In order to work through it in an orderly manner, I'm going to make a motion now with a slight change that I believe is the will of this commission. If there is a second, we can then deal with each of the requisite parts of this. That said, I move that version three of the proposed zoning code amendments to Section 241.2 be adopted as provided, with the exception to line number 162, inserting after the word "licensed" the words "and insured", and further in that line deleting the words "or" and the letter "C". That is the motion. It's seconded.
Vice Chair?
I think I asked a question earlier. Who can build a deck? Can any... I mean, can a B, C?
Depending on the composition of the deck.
Depending on the composition of the deck and the value of the expenditure, each one could. That's my understanding of the code. Now, I offer that just for general discussion, not as a legal opinion to be tested in court.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Plumlee, and now we're transitioning into discussion. So the discussion is who can build a deck?
Most decks are over the limit of Class C contractors per job legally. Anybody can build a deck. Your homeowner goes to the planning department, picks up a permit, and he can build the deck himself if he wants to. But legally, for a Class C, you have a $5,000 limit per job.
$5,000 limit per job.
Unless that's changed, to my knowledge, I think it's still $5,000.
We'll get... Pause for one moment. We'll get some clarification from staff.
I just wanted to add that, yes, a homeowner can pull a permit for their own residence, and you can perform the work at your own residence. All decks require a permit and require an inspection through our office at the time of construction. We would do inspections for footings, and we would do a final inspection.
And that also applies to short-term rentals?
Any new deck that is constructed in the city would require a permit, regardless if it's at a short-term rental or not. Yes.
And I was just told it's $10,000 now, not $5,000.
Okay. I guess I'm good then.
Okay. Further discussion. Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, thank you. So with regard... There are several items here that I'm going to speak to. With regard to the elements relating to a change in parking, I was supportive of the STR Task Force recommendation with regard to grandfathered properties. This commission has chosen to add an additional condition in the changes here related to non-grandfathered STRs. That change has not gone before the public with the same duration of time for comment that the Task Force had. But I have been assured that during City Council's vacation, that this will be put before other groups that are stakeholders in this matter. And that is important to me, that that happened. Specifically, the Resort Advisory Commission, Transportation Parking, and Pedestrian Committee, as well as civic leagues in that part of the city where we have many of the STRs. I understand that these changes that have been added will relieve the demand on parking. And that is important, that we do something about the parking problem, particularly out of the resort area. So that is appealing to me. Second, with regard to the changes related to safety, and particularly with regard to the structural inspections, this ordinance was originally put into play after the collapse of a deck in Sandbridge, where visitors were hurt. City Council found it to be in the public interest to protect our tourists from that kind of problem by having this inspection regime that we have had in place. I am loathe to sacrifice safety for expediency. It is for that reason that I wanted to see both Class B and Class C contractors not included among those who are allowed to perform the inspections of structural integrity of decks. However, I know that I'm not going to prevail on that, so at least taking the Cs out of that pool is beneficial, while enabling others, Class A contractors in particular, to expand the pool of inspectors available. It's a middle ground. And that is all I have to say. Oh, the inspection frequency has been modified... And that is all I have to say. Oh, the inspection frequency has been modified from five years to three years, and I also feel for the same reasons. That is in the spirit of protecting our tourists from these problems. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Plumley?
Just addressing Commissioner Kemp's points, which were well taken. We have revised what the Task Force has recommended, and in my view, tried to target a central point, which is difficult, to accommodate safety to the highest level by both opening up the number of experts that can conduct an inspection, but reducing the number of years that they had requested. They had requested a five-year inspection. We're saying three. So, we're saying the inspection takes place more often, and there are more people out there that can sign off on it as safe and provide that to the city. I understand the concern about B. My concern is I don't want to restrict it overly and therefore have lower compliance citywide with the obligation for the inspection. So, that's the concern, and I think it's a balanced approach, and I appreciate all of the discussion we put into it because it is a very important item.
Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Mouch?
Before we go to vote on it, I'd just like to hear the changes as read as it will be stated when we go to vote back on it. I want to, just for clarity, I just want to hear how the ordinance would be read.
Okay. Commissioner Kemp, would you kindly repeat your motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Or would you be more comfortable, the clerk?
No, I'm on it.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I move that we approve, sorry, got to get the code second. I move that we approve version three of the amendments to the city zoning ordinance, section 241.2, as presented to us with the following exceptions. On line 162, after the word "licensed," insert the words "and insured," and further in that line, strike or delete the words "or C," the letter "C." So moved.
That motion was then seconded by Commissioner Plumley. We have a motion on the floor. Is, are there any other questions or discussion? Commissioner Mouch?
Yeah, we had a lot of discussion in the informal session, and I just kind of wanted to make sure that it's on the record for the public as well as council to hear whenever this gets moved forward, however it looks. In the, specifically with the parking requirements, it was common practice that a parking plan be made, and sometimes they were able to utilize public parking spaces with a fee of a $600 yearly pass. And in doing version three, what it does is it takes the burden off of the citizen or tourist, whoever wants to park in public parking, from having to subsidize a space for an STR, and now allows for them to tell their guests that they can park in public parking or private parking and pay the normal rate. And it doesn't take any inventory out of the public parking. So, I wanted that to kind of be clear, as well as staff did a whole bunch of work when it came to a parking plan for a four-bedroom house. They would have to find two additional spaces because a single-family home is built with two spaces. What that does is that anything over a four-bedroom house, it requires more parking for that, but it's reasonable to have two cars for a four-bedroom house. Anything above that would need more parking anyway. So, I wanted to make sure that we're clear, that these were meant to ease a little bit of the burden on the public, ease a little bit of burden on staff for having to come up with a parking plan, because parking plans are very difficult if you don't do them every day. And I think that this creates a balance for the public as well as the STRs and staff to be able to have a successful outcome and create a way that we're not that we're not making, that we're not imposing subsidies on anybody, so.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Kemp?
And then on the parking, also, for the benefit of council and the public, we understand that there are a lot more elements to parking related to STRs, and the city council, in fact, has brought another one to our attention just in the past couple of weeks. This topic is likely to be revisited in the future. We are doing what city council asked us to do, take the task force's recommendations and offer them an opinion on them, building on it a little bit, but this does not mean we fully analyzed all the aspects of parking and tried to solve all of the issues related to them. That's not what this is.
Thank you very much. Are there any commissioners abstaining? Is there any further discussion? Yes. Ms. Alcock?
I'd ask for a point of clarification, because based on the discussion in informal, I thought it was the will of this group to have licensed and insured related to the contractor. The way it's stated here, it would be a licensed and insured design professional, so I didn't know if we needed to make that clarification.
You are correct that the words, yes. So, I'm going to read along line 162 correctly this time. I'll do my best. The motion is to say buy either a licensed design professional or a licensed and insured Class A or B contractor. Did I get it right?
Amended second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Staff will now call for the vote.
The vote is open. By a recorded vote of 10 to 0, item number two, City of Virginia Beach, has been recommended for approval.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Our next item is item number 12, Food Bank of Southeastern Virginia and Eastern Shore, Incorporated.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission, and this is going to be congratulations, and thank you for your willingness to serve. For the record, Eddie Bradan, Virginia Beach Attorney, and I come before the commission. It's my pleasure to come before the commission on behalf of the Food Bank of Southeastern Virginia and the Eastern Shore, Inc. Mr. Chris Tan, who's the director of the food bank, is with us, along with some of his staff, and also the civil engineer, Dan Rudy, with Timmons Group, is here. Chris will speak after I do, and he can better answer some, if you all have any operational questions, than I may, but I'll be happy to field any questions. I'll try to be brief. This is a conditional use permit, excuse me, a conditional rezoning application on 24 acres of land, multiple parcels that are all zoned agriculture that are located off of Dam Neck Road in the 70 to 75, and the greater than 75, and APZ 2 from NAS Oceana on the west side of NAS Oceana. And as such, since the adoption in 2024 of Article 18 of our zoning ordinance, this property is only able to be rezoned from agriculture to a use that is deemed compatible under the various guidance that exists in Article 18 of our zoning ordinance. And therefore, pretty much the only uses that are available to this property and a lot of other properties along Dam Neck Road, most of which are in the strategic growth areas, the Sega 1, 2, and 3 really is light industrial. And since there seems to be a lot of conversation going around lately, I think it's been kind of kicked off by the Economic Development Authority, that they don't have much industrial land. Well, the reality of it is, we have quite a bit that isn't zoned industrial, because the owners of the property aren't the government, and the owners of the property prefer to be taxed on land use on their agricultural zone property until such time as there is actually a user for their property, and don't want to be just paying, you know, out the nose, waiting for somebody to come along. Well, the food bank has a significant need. They've outgrown their facility in Norfolk, and they have purchased this property because it is in a location that the only realistic use for a 24-acre piece of property is light industrial. However, their use is clearly a compatible one, and it is one that is, does not involve the, it involves some public participation, but only their volunteers who come and help on shifts, two- to three-hour shifts, to help the 60 employees of the food bank when they are boxing and packaging food up to be picked up by those in their distribution network, the nonprofits, religious groups, et cetera, that create a network throughout southeastern Virginia and on the eastern shore, where the actual consumers, the people with the food insecurity, the people who have the need for the food, that's where they pick up food. This is not a public distribution site. That does not happen here. The public won't be coming here. Now, that's not to say that, you know, they might not have a school group or something come to, you know, to learn about the food bank and its services to the community on occasion, but it is not a public gathering facility. It's not a distribution facility to the public at all. And the plan, as you all have seen, and as Michael went over in the informal, it is such that we have one entrance from Dam Neck Road, and we have, it's a heavily treated site with the huge Dominion power, 120-foot transmission line easement going through the middle of it. The warehouse and ancillary office use in the building for the food bank is 160-plus feet from the nearest back property line of the homes to the south, or I guess maybe the west. And very importantly, they did a public outreach. The food bank did a public outreach, actually hired the Miles Agency, and they sent out 5,000 letters to all surrounding residential and business, inviting them to a meeting in February, I believe it was the day before Valentine's Day. And they also went and knocked on 500 doors and left packages on the doors of people who didn't answer or gave it to them if they were there, also inviting them and giving them information about what they were doing. The food bank has purchased this piece of property. That meeting garnered about 15 folks, and not one objected, not one. So, the community has been made fully aware of this, and an industrial use is the only, light industrial, is the only thing that can actually go on this property under Article 18 of our zoning ordinance. So, that's, I'll make that point, but it is just for the employees, and they do have volunteers, and volunteers will come, and a lot of them will drive, maybe two in a car, and they will spend two or three hours there boxing food, and they don't take it with them. Let's see, what was I going to say? Yes. As far as the, well, I think I did address that issue. I'm sorry. The, oh, that's right. There it is. Mike brought up the fact that we did not have a rendering of the rear of the building, and you all have that. They've been passed out. This will be inserted in to the proffer agreement between now and city council. It's consistent with everything else. Now, one thing, all three of the renderings, they were done, you know, the food bank obviously is, you know, they're not like, some of the developers have a little bit more money. They're dealing with, you know, people's gifts of money and contributions. This is something that was done for them, and obviously, it does not show that totally wooded buffer, 160-plus feet, that's not going to be touched between them and their nearest neighbors to the south or the west. And so, that's not accurate as far as that's concerned, but the plan is clear and the proffers are clear, and this will be submitted, will be included as an addition to existing proffer number two between now and the city council public hearing. And that's pretty much it. I could talk about the battery storage that came up this morning. This is essentially the same scenario, except in that case, the Navy had actually come in and paid the property owner to take away the right to do other things like residential on what was zone R 7.5. The Navy did not spend any money acquiring any development rights over this piece of property, but this piece, the owners of the piece of property were basically told as a BRAC and the 2004 changes, adding Article 18 to our zoning ordinance, that their property wasn't going to be developed residentially like the people behind them, and they weren't paid a penny for that opportunity being taken away. So, this is a, it's a very, very needed facility, and again, and there was an email that was sent about, from the school on the other side of Monay. I spoke to the owner. I don't believe they're here today. He indicated, once he understood that it wasn't a public facility where people would be coming to pick up food, that he didn't, you know, he didn't have any further objection. That's what he thought. Now, I don't know if anyone from the school is here or not, but they got the same email sent. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Plumley?
Mr. Bradan, this is a 24-acre site roughly. Total land disturbance is 12 acres.
That's right.
Is the non-disturbed property, place any kind of conservancy that you're aware of that protects that property from further development?
We certainly can place a proffer in here that the buffers between the building and the residential will remain undisturbed between now and the city council public hearing. That is absolutely 100% the intent, and the front piece that's got a lot of woods on it, that's where the BMP is going to be, and there's really not room up there to do anything as far as any development's concerned. But I know that that's what, if that's also a concern, we can certainly look at that.
I think the key indicates that the BMPs are not part of what's undisturbed. There's 12 acres undisturbed, then you have BMPs. So, what I was trying to envision was what are sitting there is tree canopy would not be disturbed on that plan.
And that, and I did understand, I do understand you, but I wasn't talking about the BMPs per se. Yes, we can do the exact same thing as it pertains to all of the frontage on Dam Neck Road, between Dam Neck Road and the BMP.
And I'm taking it that there's going to be piping to these BMPs, and it's necessary because, you know, 110,000-square-foot facility and parking and all that, seven acres disturbance, that's the requirement. There are no BMPs currently. Those are BMPs constructed for this design.
That's correct. What I was referring to was, there's no realistic opportunity to build another building up in the front. That's what I, that's, but your point, well taken. You know, we have no, the intent is that all of the trade areas that are shown on there will remain, other than what we have to create the BMP, and the stormwater has already been analyzed, and it clearly can meet the requirements. It's a lot of, lot of space not being, not being- It's a lot of, lot of space not being, not being utilized for land disturbances.
Thank you. Any additional questions for the speaker? Thank you very much. Hi, Mr. Tan.
Hey.
Just one second. Madam Clerk, with Speaker signed up in addition to Mr. Tan.
We do have three speakers in opposition.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Please state your name for the record, please.
I'm Chris Tan, I'm the presidency of the Food Bank. Thank you for the opportunity to consider this application, and thank you for all you do for our city. I would just really want to bring to light a couple of things that the Food Bank's thinking. So number one, first of all, we don't want to be surrounded by light industrial. The purpose of buying this much land was actually to make sure that it remains much more like what the community would be. So there's walking trails for the community and ourselves, for our staff. Around that would also be agriculture and raised beds and farm, farming, to tell the story of healthy, healthy food that we provide to this community. If you, if you really think about agriculture and where it's zoned now, we're the best thing that's going to bring that to the, to back to what it's supposed to be. Agriculture is supposed to provide food for the community. There's no one else that's going to provide the amount of food that we're going to provide for the community other than the Food Bank. I want to give you just a few statistics that maybe will help you understand what we're trying to bring to the city of Virginia Beach and wanting to partner with you all. You're investing in a Food Bank on the rise. In the last three years, Food Banks across this country, 199 of them, have seen about a 6% decrease in food, while this Food Bank has seen a 44% increase in food. In the city of Virginia Beach alone, we have provided double the amount of food we were providing three years ago, to a value to the community of $40 million in three years. We are proud of that. We are delivering 70 million pounds the last three years. When you compare that to the previous four years, we are beating that number. So we are providing an additional year of food in three-year period. We plan to grow, and the only thing holding us back from growth is a new facility. The other piece of this that I would say is that we are proud of our partnership with the city of Virginia Beach. When COVID came, the city of Virginia Beach stepped up and invested in their community. And we took that investment of $5 million over four years and turned it into $60 million worth of food for the citizens of Virginia Beach. We need your help in making sure that we can do this in the future. To kind of give you a picture of what that looks like for the city in the three years prior to these three years, so from 2019 to 2021, the city received about 11 million pounds of food from the Food Bank. The last three years, you received 23 million pounds of food. That is mostly because of the investment that you've made in us and the investment that we've made in you. Lastly, I'm happy to answer more questions as well, but to kind of give you a sense of what that increase would be like, it would be like the city of Virginia Beach performing in the top 1% in increased revenue in the country while spending a million dollars less and not raising taxes. That's what we're offering to this facility through us. We will be able to provide probably 10 million more pounds a year solely through this facility in three years. We will bring 7,300 volunteers a year, we'll bring 60-plus employees who average salary is $50,000 a year. I know we're not a business like most people think, but we operate much more like one than you think. Those 7,000 volunteers represent 29 full-time equivalents to us, or 60,000 hours of work. They often come in the morning and they leave during lunchtime. So this is an opportunity for them. And finally, I would just say, we're also going to showcase the nutrition of food and the farming community that currently exists in the city of Virginia Beach. So we thank you very much for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Tan? Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah, thanks for coming. I just wanted, if you could explain a little bit more your last statement about the garden farm and presenting on how, for the citizens that live close by there.
Sure. So our intent is around that area, we would put within regulation farming gardens, so raised beds also, probably a little on the left-hand side, that the part across from the BMP would be more of a farm, about, I think, three acres, where we would showcase what we have been focusing on, which is produce. So in addition to increasing the food distribution, we've increased produce distribution by almost 40%. So our goal is not to provide just food, but healthier food. So the idea would be that our community members, the school next door, could come by, have a piece of that property to grow their own food and learn how it grows, but also to help us harvest and to help us maintain those areas, so it's another community experience for them, so that we can talk more about the importance of healthy food in our community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions? Commissioner Cromwell.
In the outreach that you did, you said only 15 people out of 5,000 showed up? Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
And what were their comments?
So in the beginning, they were probably what most people were concerned about, are we going to have a bunch of people that are coming here to seek food? There were some safety concerns for sure. We were focused on telling them, so this was the number one concern. We do not take public food there. This is where our partners come. So we service about 23 United Way Partners and then another 200 local churches that do their own food pantries. So we, I think, dispelled those, those, those incorrections, I guess. And then the other concern was whether or not there would be a large volume of truck traffic and what our, like, regular occurrence would be. So we receive about one or two, at the most, 53-foot trucks a day there during the workdays of 7:30 to 3:30. And then we send out seven trucks a day, again, not a huge traffic. So those are the two big concerns. And after that, many said that they would speak on our behalf.
And there was 500 knocked on doors?
Yeah, so the 500, for the community closest to the location, we provided all the businesses and all of the community behind there with door knockers and things that left information, and not just about the meeting, but how to get in touch with us and our website, which showed some of the future plans as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Greg Panza, followed by Dan Wheeler.
Hello.
I'm Greg Panza, Madam President, thank you. Board members, thank you for allowing me to come and talk to you. First of all, I applaud you all, what you're trying to do, okay? I'm not totally against it, I put against, I did. I lived there, I live on that corner, right there where your retention pond is over there. And looking at the, I have all the paperwork, talking about the easements, talking about where we're not going to build and what we're trying not to do for the neighborhood, okay? I've lived there for 17 years, and the reason why I moved there is because of that, that view, that view out my backyard. I took my back fence down because of the beautiful view, the woods, the ambiance, the deers, the animals coming through the yard feeding them, okay? I'm not against that. However, comma, I am against having to look out my backyard now, looking at a retention pond, which used to be woods. I know there's 160-foot easement, which basically, let's think football, that's a half a football field, okay? That's a big space. I, I'm glad you're not going to destroy those trees or take those trees down, at least that's what I hope you're not going to do. But where I'm at right now, I am going to lose that. I've lived there for that reason, and it bothers me in a couple of things. Number one, that easement, but number two, traffic, all right? We have, our neighborhood goes from Holland Road to Dam Neck on Monay, okay? And we do experience some people who like to cut through that neighborhood. And, and I will say, there will be a problem with the fact that there's only one way in and one way out. So that means you got to come down Dam Neck Road going north to south, make that U-turn at the red light, which may back things up a little bit. But moreover, the people that are concerned, and I'm sorry, I did not get any notices about a meeting to meet and talk with you all. I didn't get nothing, okay? So that's why I'm here now. My other neighbor, who's Ben, he unfortunately, he was going to Zoom with you, but he can't because he's working. He, he gave me a couple of things to talk about, which I can't. But what I'm most concerned about is the safety factor of the neighborhood of people coming through there, okay? We have a problem as it is right now with people cutting through there. The Virginia Beach Police try to do their best to keep it down, and they do pretty good. But now with this, I could see it happening even worse. People are going to say, ah, forget that, I ain't going to do a U-turn, I just cut through the neighborhood, I can get right in there, no problem, okay? That's a concern, highly, highly heavy with kids in that neighborhood. People walk through our neighborhood all the time, always going for walks, okay? And that's another concern. I've only got a few seconds left, so I'll say that the main concern is the easement, okay? That big old pond back there, you know, mosquitoes, bugs, we got enough of that, but now I'm going to have to put up with a retention pond along with that. And let's face it, okay, water brings insects, water breeds insects, especially mosquitoes. So that's one of my concerns. Thanks for listening, and like I said, I'm not against the Food Bank, I just think, like to see some corrections done to some things to make it more feasible for me to say, yeah, it's going to be good. So thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Okay, if you could just pause, Mr. Panza, for just a minute, I think we have a question. Commissioner Plumley?
Mr. Panza, I'm trying to get a sense of where you live. It's in that, at the top corner next to the BMP?
Right at the bend there. I live right, that's my property right there, right at that bend where the two properties go like this.
Got it. Those are the larger lots there.
Yeah, that's the other part, my neighbor who's been a flank owner of that neighborhood ever since it was built, and he couldn't be here unfortunately, and you can see with that pond, it's almost buttoned up against it, all right?
And just as a follow-up, so then the road that you're saying the cars cut through, is that Glastonbury Drive, is that?
No, it's Monay. If you look at Monay, see, Glastonbury and Monay come together at two points.
Okay.
But it also starts at Holland Road and goes all the way through to Dam Neck Road, okay? And like I said, the BB police have done not a bad job, it hasn't been egregious because, but, and I can just see that problem, and I just, and also too, what's to prevent trucks from taking that shortcut through as well, okay? Trucks, they're going to say, hey, I can't make that U-turn there, I got to go ahead and find some other way to get there. What can I get there? That cut through. Take that right, take that right, and you can get into the Food Bank with no problem. And that's another concern, traffic.
Just as a follow-up, there appears to be on Glastonbury Drive, is that a stub street that stops there at the trees?
Yeah, and they talked about, they were, they were talking about putting a through there, yeah, there's a side street that goes through there that, we have a couple of bus drivers, school bus drivers that park their buses there. Well, it was mentioned that they, we're going to open it up and make that a road so the trucks can get through there to the back end, because that's what leads to the back end or the delivery end of the Food Bank, okay? That little, a little cut through there, okay? And they, they purposely, I don't know, like I said, I designed a neighborhood, but my neighbor was telling me they put that there so people can park off the street and keep their cars off of, off of Glastonbury and have a place to park on the side road there, which was like an easement, okay, an easement for, for people. And the concern was that they were going to open that up for delivery of their trucks. Now, since then, I've heard, no, they're not going to do that, and if that's the case, that's fine. That's a moot, that's a moot point, okay? But it's the idea of, of, you know, and you know, people are, people are people, drivers are drivers, they're going to find an easy way to get to someplace if they can. We all know that. And the easiest way to get into that Food Bank is no kidding, instead of making that U-turn at that light with that big old rig, making that 90-degree, you know, 180-degree turn, why not cut through the neighborhood and that way, a right and boom, a right and I'm in my, I'm in the Food Bank? That's a concern, okay? Now, if you can tell me, you can put signs up there saying, no trucks allowed, good luck with that, okay? That's, been there a long time. So that's a problem. But my problem, for me personally, is the pond. I'm not again, but give me the same easement that you're giving everybody else on the neighborhood there. Give me that same easement, don't touch our trees, leave them alone, because we don't want to see the back of the building. Property values have soared in our neighborhood. I've checked them, mine especially. I can't wait to sell, okay? No, I love my neighborhood and I don't want to leave it, but I don't want to have to look at a pond in the back of my yard. That's all I'm saying. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? One more question, Sir.
Sure.
Commissioner Cromwell.
Do you know how wide the easement is there?
Well, you know, I'll put it to you this way. If that's a half a football field from that property line to the back of the building, you can see I'm cut basically in half, if not more. So I'm talking about 20 yards, 20, maybe 25 yards from my property line to that, to that lake that's going to be there. And you're going to have to tear them trees down to get that lake in, okay? There's no getting around it. And that's what bothers me, not having that same kind of view. And when I, and let's just say I go to rent my property, okay? Property values are going to go, may go down because of that, we don't know, okay? I've got several realty friends, and they said, yeah, that could happen, okay? Those property values could go down because you're putting that light industry unit there. And that's what the question that people have had. All of the property going down to Dam Neck, you got, you got an area there at Dam Neck and General Booth, which was totally devastated back in the 80s, and they didn't build on it, for whatever reason, okay? I was stationed there when that happened, you know? To me, there's a lot other areas, and especially if you're talking about farming, and I heard you all, and I think it's a great idea, farming for the Food Bank. I got to believe there's other areas you can do that in. And again, not against the Food Bank, just, we're in a, we're a residential area, and now you want to put a light in, not, there ain't nothing light about 108,000 square feet, okay? There's nothing light about 108,000 square feet, okay? So that's my point with that, our point. Ben's not here, unfortunately, so I'm throwing some of his ideas in there as well from what he gave me, so, but any more questions? If not, thank you for your time.
Doesn't appear to be, Mr. Panza, thanks for coming out today.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dan Wheeler.
Wasn't planning on speaking. I'd also like to say that I was never given notice until I received this postcard about, it's dated June 23rd, right before the 4th of July holiday and this meeting scheduled at noon. I feel like this was kind of forced on the neighborhood. I live almost right across the street from the man that just spoke.
And Sir, could you please state your name just for the record?
I'm sorry, my name is Daniel Wheeler.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler.
And I live on Glastonbury Drive. And by this postcard, it looks like they're going to rip every tree out of there. Of course, this has been explained to me, and I understand and I appreciate the easement that you're proposing, and I hope that it does hold because it is an eyesore and it will drop property values if that is removed, I feel. I was also concerned with the hours of operation, which he made clear, 7 to 3:30-ish, and I was concerned about the traffic, and especially at that Lanesboro, which is the name of the road that he was describing, that there's going to be a cut through. That Glastonbury Drive, people park on both sides of the street. If two cars come, you almost have to pull over where a car isn't parked so the other car can park. So I'm concerned with cut-through traffic as well. Other than that, he made the points that I would have made, and also when the gentleman from the Food Bank spoke, and the lawyer, whatever, spoke and talked about the operations of the place. I have nothing against the Food Bank, I respect their, what they do for the community. I also want to respect the nature of the community I live in now to remain virtually the same or close to that. I yield my time.
Mr. Wheeler, could you just point out to us where on Glastonbury you live?
I live right at the curve, let's see, I live at 3085, if you need to know a number.
I was just trying to get a sense on the map, that's all, Sir.
I live Caddy Corner to the man that just spoke.
Okay, so you're up close to the BMP?
What?
Up to the BMP, up at the top of the curve?
Yeah, I am right near the retention pond as well, because it's just across the street from Glastonbury Drive, from that gentleman's, who does back up to it, but it was still, is a view that I will be seeing. And again, the bugs and mosquitoes, I know Landstown Lakes has a lake right there, which is a large body of water, but do we need another one for more bugs and such, is just a point to make.
Okay, Commissioners, are there any questions for Mr. Wheeler? No, Sir, pardon me, Commissioner Cromwell.
Just to clarify, when did you get your note card?
It dated the 23rd, so it has to go through the US Postal Service, and I got it like the end of June. And then there's 4th of July holiday, and then it says, if you want to see the plans, you got to make an appointment, and it's the holiday weekend. I felt it was rushed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler.
Thank you for your time.
We're going to just check to see if Mr. Jackson is available to speak. Appears he's online. Appears he's online.
Uh, yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name for the record.
Sure, my name is Ben Jackson. Um, I also live on Glastonbury Drive, I live next to, next door to Greg, uh, the first speaker on this. He covered a lot of the topics that I was concerned about. The big thing is tearing down the woods and the trees that we have back there. Um, I've lived in the neighborhood for going on 13 years, and one of the big reasons why I bought into this neighborhood was because of, of the backyard setting. Um, I, I know there's a concern, there's a need for supplying food and everything to the, to people in the city of Virginia Beach, but there's other places that they can, that this can be built. Um, I have another concern that if this, this is rezoned to, um, the light industrial, what will that mean for the other property parcels that are for sale in that area that are currently not zoned for that? Will other people in the future be able to come in and say, well, they got to do it, so why can't we build our storage facility or, or whatever we want right here? Um, so I've got concerns with that as well. And then the traffic, like, like Greg said, the, the traffic is, we already have a big enough issue with people speeding through the neighborhood, either through Glastonbury Drive or on Monet, and it's, it's, it's gonna get worse as these trucks come in. I mean, we already have multitude of Amazon trucks going up and down Dam Neck Road all hours of the night to, to increase traffic with more trucks to, to handle Dam Neck Road. You're just gonna increase more and more issues on that street. Um, I know they said the operations are proposed that, that's 7:00 to 5:00, and then 8:00 to 1:00, but you know, it also said in the, in the notes here that, you know, cars that are, trucks that are coming in, you know, can't idle for more than 15 minutes between the hours of 10:00 and 6:00 AM. So does that mean they're gonna get deliveries and everything overnight? I mean, we already have jet noise, and now we're gonna have tractor-trailers coming in at all, all hours of the night, dropping off and doing things? I mean, that's just, I mean, you're asking a lot. Um, yeah, I also, the, the setback on the park, only a 20-foot setback from the food bank to the neighborhood park. Um, I use that park every year, there's multiple sports teams that come out and use that park, so there's a lot of kids, there's a lot of people that are right there, and I don't think 20-feet setback is a safe enough environment to, for kids to be out of that park, to have the public being able to go in and out, whether they're volunteers or workers for the food bank. And that's all I really have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. If you could just stay on the line for a moment, should there be any questions from the commission?
Sure.
Any questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Cromwell?
Did you get a postcard?
I did not. Um, all I heard about the meeting was, it was posted on that Nextdoor app, uh, the day of, or maybe two days before, it was something was posted about it. Um, at that time, I was dealing with some health issues, so I was home for the following three months. Not only was I home 24 hours a day, like, nobody ever came and knocked on my door to introduce themselves or say anything. We didn't get anything through the mail, there was no notice, other than, than seeing what was on the Nextdoor app, and then doing my own research on this. So, and that, that's how, I've, I've talked to other neighbors along Glastonbury Drive, we've got new neighbors that have moved in, um, after February, that had no idea that the property was sold and what was going on behind them, um, that, that aren't happy with, with what's gonna go back there. You know, talking with them, like, well, I would've bought my house here if I'd known they were gonna cut all this down.
And you say they didn't get postcards either?
I don't know if they did. I'm not aware. I just know that, I just know that people, so the folks that I've talked to weren't aware of what was going on, that they had no idea of the food bank. Even the, the sign that was posted at the end of Lanesboro, I pointed out to multiple neighbors, and they're like, well, what's that for? And so I had explained to them it has to be rezoned, because right now it's that agriculture site, had no clue. Um, so there, there is a concern, I mean, the, the folks who live along that, that setback and that, that tree line, they, there needs to be more information, there needs to be more of a meeting to discuss and hear concerns and everything from the folks that are directly affected by this, this facility being put there.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for Mr. Jackson? Thank you very much, Mr. Jackson, for participating today.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
The only other person I have is Mr. Dan Ruby, but I believe Mr. Burdon said he was just available for questions, so that's it.
Dan is the civil engineer who signed up in case of questions.
Okay.
And he's, and he's here still. So, um, first of all, thank, thanks the people who, uh, who did come down. The, um, the first thing, that BMP that's shown up at the corner, which seems to be the, um, the concern, concern of the three people who have spoken, um, the size of that has not yet been determined, but we certainly, um, can put a preservation easement over at least 50, 60 feet of trees, uh, between that and their property. Understand, too, that the property as it is zoned, every tree on it can be removed. That's what farmers do. They, you know, they, they farm their land. Okay? So, you know, that, we're not sitting here saying we're gonna remove the trees, that's not gonna happen, we'll put easement on there. But, uh, we have, we have detention pond, retention ponds that double as lakes in many neighborhoods, and the property, the houses that are on those lakes are worth more than the ones that aren't. They're an amenity. Okay? This, so I, I, I can appreciate, you know, and we, we are, we look forward to speaking, possibly after the meeting, you know, we will 100% preserve the trees, there was always that intent, um, and supplement them if there were to be any diseased trees. We do not have to touch those trees, however, to, to dig the BMP pond. That will take place from where all the other land disturbance is coming from, we're not coming in along the back, that's the last place we were gonna, so those trees will remain that, um, the gentlemen are looking at, and behind it will be a lake, uh, or a pond, a wet pond at that. The, um, the, the cut-through idea, first of all, the, the, uh, two, two to three trucks a day, they generally are come during the day to deliver food, but early in the morning, trucks may arrive, again, all, all the delivery trucks, the major delivery trucks are coming from the interstates, they're not coming from the southern part of Virginia Beach. And if, if we're getting food delivered from some farm in the southern part of Virginia Beach, that's gonna be during the day. Um, but the, the significant deliveries do not come from our south or west, they come from our north and our northwest. Uh, so that, I, I have no ability to comprehend, unless it's an employee of the food bank who lives on Holland Road, and there's an accident at Holland and Dam Neck or something cutting through to come here. I, I, I don't, I don't see how that, I, I know people do cut through, there are traffic jams to go to one road to the other, but that's, this isn't Amazon, we're not making any deliveries into the neighborhood, not one. Okay? So, um, we, we, I think that their, their view, their lack of, I don't think it's gonna be that much disturbed at all if we preserve the trees and have got a pond to look at. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Burdon. Commissioner Plumlee?
Along the Dam Neck roadside, there's a 50-foot setback on the conceptual plan, but along the Glastonbury Drive side, there's a 20-foot setback.
It's building setback.
Well, that, that's a building setback, a disturbance setback as well, right?
No, the only place that there's, the only place that there's, I thought it was 25, it's either 20 or 25, um, that's required to be a buffer, is along, where the city park, where the park is located, uh, on the Monet Drive side. On the back, there's, I mean, the, the only thing that would be on there would be the, um, standard setback, but we're talking about putting a, a preservation easement on, and a landscaping easement on all of the tree area back there.
Okay.
And that way, it doesn't, it doesn't get disturbed, and, and it has to be maintained as well.
And you don't have volume yet to determine the size of the BMP, or was this roughed out?
It, it's, it's been through the fir, the first stage, and the staff has agreed that we can meet the, um, the stormwater policy requirements, but it has not, it's not gotten to the point where it's completely engineered. That's correct.
But if you could take more volume at the BMP closest to Dam Neck, and you could reduce the size of the BMP?
Yes, sir.
Closer to the neighborhood?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there's plenty of room there, we can, we can maintain, if, we can maintain a larger tree buffer back there. Our view was, candidly, those folks would be the happier folks, the ones that have come down today, because they don't have a parking lot or a building behind their house, they have trees and a pond.
And just to clarify, with regards to the preservation easement that would be put in place, that runs with the land?
That's correct, we would.
That is forever.
It would be a part of the proffered agreement, it would be something that the zoning department of the city of Virginia Beach would enforce.
And therefore, where that stub street's located, there would not be connection. It would interrupt that stub street, there would be no future point of connection that would run traffic into Glastonbury, into that neighborhood.
Absolutely, and Mr. Plumlee, we would have no aversion to putting a no-one-foot-no-ingress-egress easement across the portion of our boundary that is shared with the end of that street. That's an, that's an easy one.
I'm just trying to highlight a couple of things that could be of benefit to the folks with regards to this. One other thing that may be of use in just looking at the elevations, I get the impression there's a darkened color, coloring on the backside where the truck, uh, loading dock area is, but that the siding is of, of a brighter nature, it's more visible through trees and through other things, is a way to change that, or would they be willing to change it, in a way to darken it so that you couldn't see, uh, easily the, the structure through the trees? If, if, just as a suggestion, because I think that is a high concern, that people do not, their vista is not interrupted with the building, if possible.
Well, I, Mr. Plumlee, I completely concur.
I'm not talking about the frontage, but I'm talking about along where the neighborhood is.
Along the, the side of the building, and even where the loading dock is, you know, to have a, a darker earth tone, and then this is a, a beige tan, we could make it a darker earth tone.
Right.
That, that's a, that's a constructive, very constructive suggestion.
Thank you.
And we can certainly manage to do that, the same concrete tilt-up, they make it more than one color.
Okay, we have Commissioner Camp and then Commissioner Schoonover.
Thank you, Mr. Burdon. A clarification with regard to the tractor-trailer freight traffic, you would anticipate that those trucks coming from Interstate 264 will come down London Bridge, come to Dam Neck, and then come into this facility?
There or from Indian River, Feral Parkway, and then turn onto Dam Neck and come into this facility.
Thank you for that clarification. You understand that we are also working through the comprehensive plan, and the comprehensive plan does not anticipate a freight corridor type usage on Princess Anne or Feral Parkway, that it anticipates that this type of traffic will come down London Bridge, onto Dam Neck, and if, as a new light industrial use right in this area by the intersection of Princess Anne and Dam Neck, if we're learning that the market feels that its drivers are more likely to be driving up through District 1, District 7 with those tractor-trailers, that is very important to us. Thank you.
Well, I know with the Amazon applications, their, their traffic will be London Bridge to Dam Neck, and that's not to suggest in any way that they won't.
I'm only asking about your application, so thank you.
Put it.
Commissioner Schoonover?
I think you essentially addressed my question inadvertently through his, but I was gonna say, if there's an issue with people driving through certain areas, you own the land, could you put up your own sign saying, no through traffic, or what have you?
I'm sorry, my, my hearing is bad, and the acoustics here are terrible.
I'll try to yell. Um, I think you inadvertently asked, answered my question before, but just in case it comes up again, I was gonna say that if there's concern about driving through that property through a different direction, if you own the land, could you not put up your own signs to address that issue so that they wouldn't have to worry, no through traffic, or what have you?
Well, no, there's, there is no, there is no ability to come into our entrance and get into the neighborhood. The, what the gentleman was talking about is there's a stub street off of Glastonbury that is basically behind the building, that's never, it was there when the neighborhood was platted. We can't get there with the trees, but what I did say is, we will absolutely be happy to put a one-foot-no-ingress-egress easement, which is what the city does along highways when you're not, you're not gonna get any access across it, we can put that on our property where that stub street ends. But there is no ability to get, and we have, we will not permit, but that's the way to permit it, 'cause there's no other way to get into the neighborhood other than to go into Monet, but that is a city park, we can't get there, it's just that stub street, and we will, that will never happen. And we'll, we will see that that happens with a no-ingress-egress easement across it. That's a part, that'll be a part of the site plan. Sorry.
Any additional questions for the applicant? Commissioner Cromwell?
Mr. Burdon, can you address the, the mailing of the notices? The first gentleman said he never got his, and he lives right behind, he's on Glastonbury.
Yeah, the, the city mails notices out that they were referring to, that they received, those are the city notices that the city would've sent out three, four weeks ago. As far as the, the notices that the Miles Agency delivered and that were mailed back in January for this meeting in February, I, I do not know, but we, we know people received them. We had numerous people, we've had, gotten emails from people who didn't come to the meeting thanking us and telling us that they were supportive, so we know they were delivered. Now, now, again, it, it's conceivable that, you know, Postal Service didn't deliver, you know, some of them, who knows? I mean, we all have problems with the Postal Service these days, but, uh, that, that, those would've been houses that would've been knocked on and, and left on the door. But I wasn't doing that, but that is exactly what, uh, Ms. Miles and her agency took care of back in January of this year.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Alcock?
I just wanted to provide some more clarification to Commissioner Cromwell's question. So it looked like the piece of paper that Mr. Panzer held up was the letters that the city sends out to adjacent property owners. Based on the list that I pulled up, Mr., Mr. Jackson was also on that list to receive the notification, so I'm not sure why it did not get delivered to him, but that is the notice that Mr. Panzer was, was showing earlier, was the one sent by the city.
So the city sent out letters to everybody on Glastonbury?
Not everyone on Glastonbury, I have the full list of, um, addresses here on Holland, Glastonbury, Monet. It was about 54 notices that went out, and that's based on the adjacent property owner notification requirement in the state code.
Thank you.
I'd now like to open up the floor for discussion and/or motion. Commissioner Plumlee?
I'd just like to make a motion so we can discuss, discuss its contents openly. We've talked a lot about the preservation easement, that affects my opinion greatly about the application. Um, there appears to be, in the proposed conceptual drawing, um, 12 acres, um, of total land disturbance that's indicated. Um, and then it breaks down what those disturbances are. Um, what I'd wanted to do is make a motion to prove the application with all the conditions as part of the application agreed to by staff, but add to them that there be a preservation easement placed along all areas where there is no disturbance. Um, further, that a no-ingress-egress will be placed on the opposite side of that stub street, and the name, I can't remember, uh, of the street.
Lanesboro.
Lanesboro, thank you, I knew it, Susan. Um, and, um, if we could reduce the northern side BMP, um, some amount, to reduce the dependency on that, if it needs to expand the BMP closer to Dam Neck, that they do that, um, because that's one of the main objections by the neighbor who came to speak, um, assuming it's lawful for me to make. me to make those combinations.
Ms. Eisenberg, I think, is going to clarify that for us. Commissioner Plumley?
Unfortunately, it's not at this juncture. Since it's a proffered agreement of a conditional rezoning, it can't be changed at the hearing, but I do think that the applicant was stating that they would make those changes between this hearing and city council's hearing, but it looks like the applicant's agent can speak to that.
So in that 10-day window?
Yes, Commissioner, excuse me, Mr. Burdon.
We will stipulate that if you all desire, as a commission, that we put a preservation easement on all of the treed areas beyond what is shown here or required by the stormwater regulations, then we would entertain doing so. But we don't know, I'd also suggest that we certainly will increase the size of the treed buffer adjacent to those couple of houses, because that pond can just as easily go further up and be changed in its dimensions. We didn't think that pond in that location would be objectionable. But my client will have those conversations with these gentlemen, and I think we can work that part out.
Well, since we're talking about things I cannot control, I would also ask, within that list, that you consider a different coloring for the exterior that's on the side of the Glastonbury Drive. Of course, this is a wish list now, because I can't lawfully amend what's been put in front, but I wanted to make clear so that, because this isn't just watched by people at home with popcorn because it's so entertaining, it's actually watched by members of council, and they see you make these representations right here, live, and they're going to insist upon them.
As do all of the city staff.
Okay.
We will definitely massage our proffer agreement to include the suggestions that you have made. If everyone, the commission is in agreement, and I certainly believe they will be, that we'll make those changes, those additions to the, we're not going to delete the existing proffers.
Thank you. And so, going back, I'm making a motion to approve this submitted, and I don't know if there's a second, but I've made the motion.
Is there a second?
I'd like to second the motion to approve the application, and to the extent that Commissioner Plumley discussed it, I would like to add my discussion, that while I appreciate any efforts to make the neighbors happier with the application, that would be wonderful. And also, I think long and hard before I vote in favor of moving Virginia Beach property from agricultural to light industrial. I don't take this vote lightly. I think it's an important vote. This property has very limited application anyway, and this happens to be one of the few things that it seems well-suited for. And we all, of course, applaud the efforts of the Food Bank of Southeastern Virginia.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Camp.
I also applaud the suggestion of re-engaging with the neighbors to see if this can be tailored out, to be more satisfactory through the site plan and detailed process. That is commendable. I agree with my fellow Commissioner Beiler with regard to conversion to industrial space. In this case, the site is above the green line, and that is an important distinction for me, particularly in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any additional discussion? Commissioner Mouch?
Out of curiosity, since the DEQ regulations for BMPs has now incorporated tree canopy or as a best management practice, has our city ever had anybody use that as a BMP?
To my knowledge, it hasn't been used yet. We have had instances where you drain into conserved open space. It really is site-dependent, what the downstream conveyance looks like, but to my knowledge, no one has used a tree as a BMP yet, but it is an option.
Okay. Well, I think if it were to be preserved, and this may be an opportunity to explore that, and it may have the ability to make that retention pond a little bit more palatable for the neighbors, just a suggestion. I don't know how much it's going to actually help, but I think saving our tree canopy is something that would be extremely beneficial to all citizens.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a vote on the floor for approval by Commissioner Plumley, seconded by Commissioner Beiler. Are there any commissioners abstaining? Can call the vote?
Vote is open. By a recorded vote of 10 to 0, item number 12, Food Bank of Southeastern Virginia and Eastern Shore Inc., has been recommended for approval. Our next item is item number 13, YPBLLC.
Welcome back.
Sorry to hold you all up. Again, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach attorney, representing YPBLLC, which is the entity that owns these properties, and applied, the actual proposed development would be done by the Bichard Companies. And they are here, my clients are here today, and along with some supporters as well. What I've just provided are copies that you may already have of, I believe it's nine letters of support, or eight letters of support from the neighbors, and there's another letter that just came in that they were not able to get copies made, so didn't have a copy of that. So this is a very interesting application. The hodgepodge of zoning here is about as mixed up as you can find anywhere. We have one lot, 7,000, all 7,000 square feet, that's zoned OR. That's the portion of the block, not quite half of the block, but close to it, that is zoned OR, Oceanfront Resort. And then we've got a couple lots that are zoned A12, followed by a couple lots that are zoned A24, and another lot that's zoned A36. And staff has indicated that you could build 21 residential units on those properties as zoned. I beg to differ, I'm pretty certain you could build at least 24 units. There is no limit on the number of units in OR, and we can get 12 parking spaces on that property, so you could build at least six units on that. And the same, the A36 is close to six, and you add up all of them, and it's really about 24. So it is clearly consistent with the policy with the Navy. We're reducing the amount of units that can be built on this property. Again, it's a proffered plan to build these for-sale owner, well, they'll be sold as owner-occupied. They cannot be units, very much like the rest of the Seapines area that has been redeveloping over the last 15 to 20 years. And I'd done some numbers on this back about 12 years ago and provided to the planning commission at that time, and it was incredible, the increases in value of these properties as they've been redeveloped. That has not involved any expenditure of public funds whatsoever, totally organic redevelopment. And since then, it's only gone even higher in terms of the difference between the value prior to the redevelopment and after. And there's still more to come, as you go around Seapines and see there are some properties that are going to be redeveloped as time moves forward. But having this OR district creates a whole, and it doesn't, there's no way that that is the same as having these zoned properties that have higher setbacks. So you've got to build to, you have to build to within five feet of 34th Street in the OR district. The property to the east of us that's not a part of this, that's what they've had to do. The part that is a piece of us would have to do that without rezoning. So we are working with a situation that is in flux, and that's why you have the application that you have, and some of the setback variances are, and as staff has duly noted, it actually does make sense when you talk about a block that the first part's got to be five feet off the property line, and we're 18 feet back from the property line. That's, you know, it's a change in character, but it's changed because of what was placed in the first part of the block. There's also something in here, I'll get this out of the way. The provision in here about this property needing to have a variance to lot coverage is actually not correct, and I'll take some of the blame for not being more boisterous about it when I first heard this was being told. I looked at it like, well, I guess maybe it doesn't matter, but then as more I thought about it, especially with having Briceal on the same agenda, which is a townhouse condominium as well, and I've done at least probably 20 of these over the years. If it's one piece of property, which is what this will be, the 40% lot coverage for townhouses is based on individual lots, okay? It doesn't apply to this. So this is A24, 60% lot coverage, and we're at 58%, okay? That's the way we filed the application, and that's the correct, it turns out that is the correct way. These are not individual lots, never have been individual lots. There is no 40% lot coverage that's set forth in your staff report. That would be if you were doing townhouses on individual lots, okay? So get that out of the way. Excuse me. So the units are two-car garages, and there's a proffer that the garages must remain available as garages. They can't be converted to living space, okay? We're two blocks from the ocean, two and a half blocks from the ocean. The owners of these units will, almost assuredly, the overwhelming majority anyway, are going to park their cars in their garage. If you live by the ocean, you know you don't leave your car parked outside, all right? So the two onsite parking spaces that'll be used most often will be the garages, not the parking spaces in the driveway. The driveway spaces will wind up being for guests and visitors, or maybe somebody has three cars, I mean, but those are the spaces that will be less used overall in terms of... So the fact that there is a reduction in the on-street parking along 34th Street is made up by the fact that we have all these units, 10 on 34th Street, 10 on 34th and a Half Street, that have a total of four spaces for each unit onsite, which most, a lot of the properties in this area do not have that much parking onsite like these do. These are, again, these will, as staff has correctly noted, this is exactly what we're looking for in terms of increasing the amount of year-round residents, permanent year-round residents with these higher-end townhome condominiums, and staff's recommendation is approval. We obviously agree with that recommendation. The setbacks make the property more consistent with the OR, which is the rest of the block to the east, and we still make the parking increase, and we are preserving all the parking on Arctic that will be made available with the redevelopment of the property to the west, which I'll be representing in a few months, because I've got a plan from, that property's changed hands, and that will be coming forward. And Arctic will need to be widened, and that will allow for the on-street parking on Arctic that's not available today. If you have to answer any questions, any of you may.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Mouch?
Could we get clarification from staff on the 58% lot coverage? Just making sure that what he said is accurate.
Yes, what Eddie Burdon said is correct, and we'll own this staff error on this. The townhouse, these are townhouse-style units, but they are not townhomes on individual lots. This is considered a multifamily building style, which has a 60% lot coverage, so they are within the allotted lot coverage.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Plumley?
There were two other deviations. The side yard and front setback was one deviation. The other is regarding this Public Works Design Standards Manual and the turning radius. It's my understanding that traffic engineering is willing to sign off on that if there's approval. Is that fair?
That is correct. We've had meetings with Mr. Hanson and staff on that, and what that affects, the driveway to the end unit, and especially in this block, in this location, that, it's on the westbound side, so you're not going to have a car coming off of Arctic and turning, and a car backing out be in a position where there could be an accident. If you are on the opposite side, on the south side, and you had a driveway in close proximity where the traffic on Arctic would possibly come around while you're backing out, that might be dangerous. But here, you're going against the traffic versus the turn off of Arctic. So it's not, it doesn't create a danger as far as accident is concerned, and I think that's the primary reason, and they don't exist today. I mean, they don't exist on any of the blocks up there today.
What's the "they"? What do you mean?
The rate, the turning, the radius of time.
Let me follow up with that.
These were platted 100 years ago.
Understood. I've got one follow-up with this. This is not to be any STRs at this location.
Cannot be.
And is it agreeable to place a restrictive covenant that there cannot be in the future STRs at this location?
My clients are here, I will certainly ask them that question.
Ask them that, because, you know, when you have that traffic situation and you have visitors, you have more likelihood for there to be error in the way. Somebody that lives there understands the rules of the road, how things are to be, it's less of a problem. But I think, you know, these are lovely plans. I think they're in line with what's happening down there. I think I can get behind it, but I would like, I don't want these to become STRs.
And as you are probably aware, most of you are, most of the two-unit condos at the north end, not all, have such covenants that they cannot be leased for less than 30 days, and I'm confident that we'll agree to that, but I need to make sure my client agrees with it.
Thank you.
Pause for just one second. Are there any more questions for the applicant? Yes? Did you see? Oh, pardon me. Okay, I do believe we have speakers, so during that time, you could speak with your client. Madam Clerk?
We have six speakers total. Our first speaker is Robert Fatovic, followed by Ryan Williams.
If you could please state your name for the record.
I'm Robert Fatovich. I am a neighbor, an architect, and a member of the PDRC. I love the existing Hemingway Homes. However, I am supportive of this project, and I want to thank Mr. Bichard and his team for reaching out to the neighborhood to discuss the plans, unlike the Beach Tower development previously on the docket. I also appreciate the effort that they presented to the PDRC. With the recent and proposed developments, the Seapine Neighborhood will soon be known as the No Seapines Neighborhood. We are one of the few neighborhoods in Virginia Beach that have massive ponds. We are one of the few neighborhoods in Virginia Beach that have massive pines and oak trees, live oaks, the city tree. Many, however, were cut down in the recent developments and have not been replaced. I am pleased to see that planning staff on the planning report added tree cover to the original plans that were presented to us in the neighborhood. I would also encourage the city to enhance the entire neighborhood with improved sidewalks and street tree cover, much like the old beach enhancements. Finally, I get to be on my soapbox again and talk about pedestrian safety crossing Pacific Avenue. With this development, Beach Tower, a potential development at 34th and Arctic, which Mr. Burdon just mentioned, and a proposed parking garage at 35th and Pacific, city traffic engineers need to take a hard look now at improving pedestrian safety. At a minimum, install an active pedestrian crosswalk signal at 34th and look at reducing speed limits. And let's not repeat the hawk signal saga, taking close to three years to install pedestrian safety features up and down the north end. Thank you.
Okay, if you could just pause in case there's any questions. Any questions, Mr., for Mr. Fatovich? Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Ryan Williams, followed by Carolyn Connor.
Hello.
Hello. My name is Ryan Williams and I live at 404 A 34th Street in one of the houses that was just developed. And I think the plans, I've checked them out, are amazing. What I like on 34th Street, there's a lot of parking for Trinity Church. So there's cars lined up. And I live in a newer development. And one of the good things about the driveways is it's not so many cars. Because our road is like one of the only roads that you don't have to pay to park. So of course, everybody always parks on it. So one thing about this is having those driveways with two-car driveways, you're not going to have as many cars parked on the road, which you're not going to have as many people. And so, yeah, I'm in total favor of it. And I think it's a dynamic plan. I can't see them, they're not up, but, um, yeah, just wanted to say that.
Well, thanks for coming out today. Commissioners, are there any questions for Mr. Williams? Thank you so much.
And I also have a letter from my neighbor who couldn't make it today.
Okay, great. If you could just give it to our clerk right here. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carolyn Connor, followed by Kitty Boucher.
Hello, Ms. Connor.
Hi, how are you? I was here in February because I was, had concerns then about the beach project. But this is a way different project. That one is way too high, overdid zoning, whatever. I really wanted to thank Mr. Burchard that he has, he did, like Bob said, got all of our neighborhood together. Many people showed up, showed us the plans, which are beautiful, just let us give our feedback, which one of them is traffic. Because of the driveways, it will be decreased parking there. But that's really not a problem for the people necessarily that live there unless you have company. And if they do do that, make the other project there on Arctic, that's going to widen the area. So there will be additional parking there that we haven't had. I've lived on 34th Street for 20 years. I've spent my last year on Arctic and 34th. I don't want to ever leave that area. It's a really nice eclectic area. I feel like, like Bob said, the Hemingway homes, they're, they're just different colored. But you couldn't have renovated them because they have horrible mildew smell in them. I don't know how people stand, like, because they're rentals right now. I don't even know how people stand it. But part of the plan that you didn't get to see is that they're, they are very colorful, the homes that Mr. Burchard has presented with green and blue and yellow and I think, you know, maybe one other color. But it's going to be really pretty and we all really appreciate that they did speak with us. They asked our opinion. I think it's going to be something that for, for our neighborhood will definitely enhance our neighborhood. So, thank you.
No, thanks for being here today. Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kitty Boucher, followed by Channing Tuttle.
Hello.
Hello. My name's Kitty Boucher. I'm a lifelong resident of Virginia Beach. My father built an apartment building on 33rd and Arctic in 1955. I've worked in that office since 1985, 40 years. I've seen a lot of changes. When I was showing tenants and discussing rentals, I would often walk to the corner of 33rd Street and say, you see those two yellow lines over there? They separate commercial Virginia Beach from residential Virginia Beach. And that has made that location incredible for people, whether they had vehicles or not. Post office, 7-Eleven, laundromat. So again, living here my whole life, I remember when I read an article in the newspaper, they rolled a bowling ball down Atlantic Avenue on Labor Day. Virginia Beach has changed a lot, but a lot of the changes has been for tourists at the oceanfront. My mom was at Atlantic Shores. I have good friends at Westminster Canterbury. Beach Tower is going to give the residents of Virginia Beach a chance to do what the tourists of Virginia Beach can do, which is enjoy the ocean and the boardwalk. Those businesses that still close off-season on Atlantic Avenue, they're not going to have to close now. They'll have customers. But I'm a safety-first landlord and here are my concerns. First of all, I'm grateful for the people who spoke before me. They also are concerned about pedestrian safety. I, I will go out of my way, I will go around Holly Road to keep from crossing Pacific Avenue and my vehicle. There's a stoplight at 32nd Street, there's a stoplight at 40th. With Beach Tower and now all of the residents that are coming, that are going to want to use the oceanfront, we need safer parking. We need to think about it now, not as what happened with Gold Key. Now, that project got built without safe pedestrian parking at 41st Street? What were we thinking? So we have to do it now. And that was, that's one of my requests, maybe 34th Street. I don't think we need a stoplight, but we certainly need a safe way for people to cross Pacific Avenue. Now, this, all of this is going to change Arctic Avenue significantly. I know though, that crossing from 34th to 35th Street, it's not a two-lane road now. You, when you drive there, you have to take turns on Arctic Avenue. Arctic Avenue is going to have a lot more traffic, of course. This year, a property that had one house on it, which was not occupied, now has six on one corner and nine on another, 15. And now we're going to increase, and we're all happy for that. But Arctic Avenue is going to need some attention. I hope somebody's looking.
Ma'am, your time is up right now. If there's maybe one more quick thing you want to say?
One more thing is parking meters. There are four on 35th Street, there are two on 34th Street, there are 12 on 33rd Street. Those are the last places anybody parks. I would like them removed.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out today. We appreciate this. Just for one second, are there any questions? Thank you very much.
Our next speaker in opposition is Channing Tuttle, followed by Anthony Sanchez via WebEx.
Hey, good morning, or afternoon, sorry. My name is Channing Tuttle. I am a former City of Virginia Beach zoning inspector for short-term rentals. My last month was in November of 2024, yeah, 2024, excuse me. I left due, I resigned due to a toxic work environment. The properties involved in this rezoning request were in my enforcement area. I personally invested, investigated for illegal STRs. They were found to be in violation and they did prepay their first round of fines. The second round of violations occurred, they were disputed. City Attorney's Office chose to dismiss the cases. Despite that, complaints continued to be filed. And yet somehow, according to the STR team, as indicated by the City of, Citizen of Cellar portal, where we keep our records, our complaints, no further violations were ever found. Meanwhile, YPB Resorts website and public booking platforms show no meaningful change in operations, suggesting the illegal SCR activity simply continued without consequence and with apparent inaction by the SCR team, zoning, planning, and the City Attorney's Office, while pushing out employees like myself, who, I was hired to protect these citizens. I was hired to enforce an ordinance equally. Did not say special treatment for developers and property management companies. So let's look at the facts. Today, YPB is operating 16 units as illegal short-term rentals on this property. These units combined for 48 bedrooms, 138 advertised guests, far beyond what is permitted under zoning and occupancy limits for legal SCR use. If you approve this rezoning, you're enabling construction of 20 new units, each with two to three bedrooms for a total of 60 bedrooms and a likely occupancy of up to 180 guests. Based on the applicant's own track record, there is every reason to believe that these new units will be used as STRs, just like the current ones. And while this developer was allowed to continue operating despite disputing fines, avoiding compliance, everyday residents in Virginia Beach were still being cited. They were still being forced into compliance. Some gave up their STRs. Not okay. So I asked this commission, why do developers get to operate above the rules? Why does planning, the SCR team repeatedly fail to hold them accountable? And why is the public body supposed, how are you guys supposed to make informed decisions? If planning is not giving you guys all the relevant information, I would like to submit to you guys, here's all the active advertisements. Every single property matched up with all of their plans. I actually included a list of all the violations, none of which is in your staff report whatsoever. I would also like to give you a stack of emails where the City Attorney's Office had all the evidence, illegal short-term rentals. But all of this information with other things, I'm very concerned that the name Burchard keeps coming up. When I was on enforcement, anytime I found something of Burchard's, I got taken off. When I found their SCR applications, not eligible, removed.
Thank you very much for coming today. If you would just pause for a moment, should the commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Plumley?
Ms. Tuttle, let me take a deep breath.
Trying. I have really bad PTSD from these people, so I'm sorry.
Well, I'm, you know, I've been drinking information out of the fire hose and I, and I need to kind of organize myself a little bit.
It's a lot.
So with regards to your time with the city, can you tell me, you were in enforcement, in planning, in the zoning department, is that correct?
Sir, since 2021.
Since 2021. And, and you were assigned the specific area. So zoning has gone through some changes with regards to personnel over the last several years and things have changed quite a bit. I'm curious to know, with regards to this site that we're under consideration, what were you finding in terms of the rentals, the people inside? Were you going to the site? Were you talking to people there?
I was the only SCR zoning inspector who actually, it's the only thing I went against leadership, was they told me that I did not have to do onsite inspections to take someone to court. I grew up with my mother. She worked for zoning for a long time, still works there. It was basic 101. If you're going to take a citizen to court, you at least need to go do an inspection. Now, she never advised me to go against leadership or directives as far as that goes. She is completely separate from what I'm here for. So I hope everyone remembers that. But I went door-to-door. When applicant, when renters were there, I interviewed them, I made comments, I had recordings of them. It was actively, like, they are still actively advertising, taking reservations. It never stopped. Airbnb, VRBO, they have their own personal website. It took me an hour and a half to make this presentation for you guys. An hour and a half. That's it. I'm very confused why I got shut down for three and a half years trying to present this information, not just to you guys. I watched plenty of reports get buried before they hit this off, or they hit this body. I even tried to update information, give them new information. They had people who were not even on the STR team providing you guys with information and the task force. And I submitted updates because they were giving outdated information. Last June, I was begging for work. And now we're increasing permit prices to help with staff? When they have two people there that don't want to work and one who loved it? So I'm very concerned about the information that you receive. I'm concerned about liability for the City of Virginia Beach. I have been this whole time, which is why I brought these concerns to leadership. And instead, I got left destitute with PTSD and I love it. So.
Well, whether or not this is the appropriate venue for all of this discussion is debatable. But being the representative of District 6, directly impacted by this, I would certainly like to talk to you offline and get more information about what's occurred. I think it's important because all we have is our enforcement to hold people accountable. And I want to make sure that my conscience is clear that we're doing that while we've approved quite a number of these STRs since I've been on, on the commission. And I want to make sure. And this is the first I'm hearing of all this. So I'm, I'm reacting in real time, trying to comprehend what you're saying. And one thing I have asked with this is that there be placed a restrictive covenant against STRs. And I take it from what you're saying is, put all the covenants you want, there won't be enforcement against it at this location. But I will have to take that under consideration. And I appreciate you answering my questions.
Thank you. Would you like a copy of this, sir?
I would.
Thank you. And I appreciate you guys allowing me to talk today.
Are there any other questions for the speaker?
Oh, yes.
Thank you very much. Want to share that with the clerk or Mr. Plumley? Pardon me?
Our last and final speaker is Anthony Sanchez via WebEx.
Hello.
Hello, am I audible?
Thank you for being here today. Could you please state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Anthony Sanchez and I own property directly adjacent on 34th and a half Streets.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. If you'd like to go ahead, you have three minutes.
Yes, I appreciate it. I'll try to make the most of it. I have about six points. Unfortunately, it sounds like there was a plan that floated around the neighborhood. I was not privy to that, so I can only go by the information I have. Looking, if you look at their website, everything that these states, they said these are for vacation rentals on 34th Street. If you're familiar with the area, look at it on the street on 34th and a half. I have about six key points. One is the increased density and neighborhood character. I think that if you look at the current zoning laws, there, there are restrictions against density on that. And if you look at the character of the neighborhood which should be impacted, things I have concerns about are about transient, crime, drug, recreational drug invitations. I think that those with people that don't live there are going to pollinate the neighborhood. I have to look at the noise impact. I understand that they are in a 70-75, that's a full noise zone, but there has to be increases in the noise. I think that conflicts with the city noise policy. There are pre-existing concerns. If you look on 34th and a half Street, for example, that is a two-way street that really only has room for one direction of cars. So I think we, we are still adding to the traffic and parking credit. I think there are strengths on utility services. For example, utility maps in that area are still not up to date. I can tell you that when I call the electric company, for example, they don't know where my utilities. And I think that we have to look at the overall strain of infrastructure, the, the crime, utilities, and what we're inviting to that neighborhood. There's already not enough room and parking for people that live there full-time. These are the things that I would like to see addressed. So you gave me the option of support or not, or, or opposition. I had to choose opposition because I don't see anything that looks see anything that looks to ease congestion on the neighborhood as it stands today.
Thank you very much. Pause for just one moment. Should there be any questions from commissioners? Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Sanchez, for participating today.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, I just want to confirm there are no more speakers.
There are no more speakers.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bordon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As far as the last gentleman's comments are concerned, as you all are aware, this is reducing the legally permissible maximum density on these properties, and most importantly, creating a higher value property than the, some of the older, functionally obsolete buildings that are still in the Seapines area that are going to be redeveloped, just as many already have been redeveloped. These are units that are being built for sale to individuals. They will not be inexpensive, and they will be restricted, that there will be no rentals permitted in the condominium declaration. Like, a lot of stuff at the North End has no rentals of less than 30 days will be permitted. The Channing's testimony, and I believe she has misunderstood, I couldn't quite tell, there's a lot of information. The owner of this property is Mr. Mimran, who is Y B P. The Becharde's do not own this property, have not had any interest in this property. They are contractual purchasers of this property. They don't operate it. They don't manage it. They don't know anything about what Ms. Tuttle is speaking. The owner, again, I'm not here to defend or commit that he's done anything wrong. I don't know. I do not know. I know Mr. Mimran. I have not spoken to him other than to get his signature on the application and the proffer agreement. Mr. Mimran, for years, and may still be running the amusement park down at the oceanfront between Atlantic and Pacific on like maybe 15th Street, something like that. But I, but one thing is for certain, that's not going to be the case. The Becharde's are going to wipe this property clean and build these units that will not be short-term rentals. So that problem goes away. They don't, they have no culpability with regard to that. They do own some short-term rentals in the city of Virginia Beach, and they're in compliance. So I don't know, haven't had any kind of issues that, they may get some inquiries at the planning department, just like you about a lot of short-term rentals, but they've had no issues or run-ins with anybody as far as short-term rentals are concerned. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Hippen?
Let me think how I want to ask you. You said they are built for sale with no rentals less than 30 days in the condo, in the condominium paperwork. That's not the bill of sale for the property. That's not the bill of sale for the property.
The condominium declaration goes to record and affects all, in this case, it would be 20 units. And there's a condominium association that would manage and operate, as far as the rules are concerned of the condominium. And they would, it would be enforceable by them. And again, it's also, it's not allowed in A 24. You can't do short-term rentals in A 24. You can only do them in O R now. So, and again, there, I won't get into the, you've all been through all the stuff with grandfather. You don't need to listen to all that. So with this redevelopment, there will be no legal way that this property could be used as a short-term rental. And on top of that, the owners' association, the other people in the condominium, their management, they can also fine, take to court anybody who violates that. At the North End of Virginia Beach, we have a lot of two-unit condominiums, and the vast majority of those condominium declarations do not allow rentals for less than 30-day periods. Because if you have a lease that goes on for a year and they don't sign a new one, it rolls over to a month-to-month, and that's why they have them in there, which that's not a short-term rental if somebody's on a month-to-month lease. It's not a short-term rental anywhere in Virginia Beach. So this would just be one more lever, to make sure that it wasn't. And more importantly, I think what Mr. Plumley was also referring, concerned about is that somewhere in the future, short-term rentals got to be permitted in districts other than O R.
Yes.
This would stop that. Just like at the North End, it keeps people from using, on their condominiums, the properties as short-term rentals, in addition to the city's enforcement.
Okay, okay.
It's enforceable by the neighbors.
Correct.
That's the point of the covenant, is that you can be sued by your neighbor for doing it and stopped by your neighbor. You don't have to wait for the city's enforcement arm. That's the point.
Okay, that's, you answered my question.
And you're liable to the association for their legal fees if they sue, and it's a lien against your property. And so they have some opportunities to enforce that that may be more efficient and more effective than the government.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Your turn.
Thank you. Sorry.
Commissioner Plumley?
You're having to defend a couple of people today. Sorry. So I see Bruce Mimran is the manager of the Y P B LLC.
I believe he's the only member as well.
That is believed to be the only member. Okay. So what is stated in this documentation will take me a while to digest, is that this, it says this property is grandfathered but needs to obtain a permit. And there's a series of communications with the city attorney's office, with Ms. Channing Tuttle, along those lines. You know, to get into the who shot John of that at this point is a little difficult. But you've made a strong representation about what will be in the documentation for this particular site, and I think I need to just make that clear. I don't think I have the ability to amend anything in front of us to include that. But I'm going to be talking to members of city council and reminding them of this, of the importance of this. And I will be forwarding this report on to members of city council for their review as well, because it's serious. And enforcement is all we have to hold people to the rules that we carefully carve out up here. So anyway, thank you, Mr. Bordon.
Any additional questions? Thank you very much. So I'd like to open the floor up for discussion and entertain a motion. Commissioner Camp?
Madam Chair, pursuant to a letter that is on file with the city attorney, I will be abstaining from all discussion and vote on this matter.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Plumley?
I'll move to approve this application as submitted. That's all we can do.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Plumley to approve, a seconded by Commissioner Anderson. Is there any further discussion?
I just.
Yes, Commissioner Hippen?
Just, it disturbs me to hear what this lady said. I've come to know the folks in planning, and I don't know what's going on here. What I do know is that we do have rules that have to be enforced, and we need to make sure that they are enforced. These properties are not set up to be short-term rentals. That's good, in my opinion, because as Mr. Plumley and I keep saying over and over, we need housing for permanent residents. And this is a good place to put permanent housing for residents. I too will speak to my council member to ensure that he understands that these are not for rental, short-term rental, but for long-term residency. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mouch?
I appreciate everybody coming out today and voicing your opposition or your support for this project. I think there was a lot of key things that were mentioned that I think we all need to make sure that we are mindful of moving forward, especially traffic on Pacific, traffic on Arctic. As we do these things, we need to be extremely mindful of that. Pacific does get a lot of money from the state through smart scale, which is a good thing, but in order to get money through smart scale, you have to rank really high as a dangerous road. So we need to always be mindful of that. Any pedestrian areas that we can refuse or ways to improve pedestrian movement through or across really Pacific is a must. And thank you for bringing those up. Just for the record, I wanted to highlight the letter that was sent by the members of the Planning Design Review Committee from the Resort Advisory Commission. They have some comments that it would be wonderful if there was, if the developer had the opportunity to incorporate and try to help the project out from what they had said. There are some really good things in that letter. And any way that we can enhance the live oaks that we have out there, preserve the live oaks and the Seapines neighborhood. So I think we need to be mindful of the lot coverage and the townhouse, make sure that that gets changed in between. But I am in agreement with those who have spoken that they would be in support of this.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just wanted to comment that I'm constantly reminded the uniqueness of all the different neighborhoods that we have here in our city, and particularly the Seapines, and how we have these Hemingway-esque homes that are being taken down, but they're still very unique and creative, colorful homes being put up. And it's addressing our need both in housing and creating that design element. So I just want to thank the applicant for being a good neighbor. I think for so many people, we often hear so many folks who don't feel they have been included in the conversation, so I'm grateful for that. So thank you very much. We have a vote on the floor in favor of this application from Mr. Plumley and seconded by Commissioner Anderson. Thank you.
I would just like to add to, because just to bring some balance to this, my experience is that we've had an excellent, we've had wonderful input from our staff at all times. We've had terrific involvement with our staff of some very, very difficult jobs. So I need to balance all of this coming. And, you know, these things need to be looked into when they're brought to our attention. But let's, I have to proceed in a balanced way, and I wanted to say that, to let everybody know that I'm still supportive of everyone that I've worked with here and have had nothing but wonderful encounters. So I just want to say that specifically. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hippen?
I have addressed in the past rumors, okay? I don't know, I get bees buzzing in my ear in between sessions. And it does concern me that things get out into the public and circulate. So I am not placing any blame on anybody. I'm not saying that somebody's not doing a job, somebody is doing a job, somebody's telling the truth, somebody's lying. My concern is to make sure that what we vote on here is used in the fashion in which it is passed on and when city council gets it, that the way that they vote for these properties to be maintained is done in that manner.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, we'll have staff call the vote. The vote was open.
By a recorded vote of eight to one with one abstention from Commissioner Camp, item 13, Y P B LLC has been recommended for approval.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Before we call the next agenda item, we're halfway through our regular agenda. I'd just like to check in with commissioners. I've been taking a five-minute recess.
As I see members of the public slipping out the back to the restroom, I think a five-minute recess would be in everyone's interest.
Five minutes, and thanks, everyone, for their patience. We'll be right back. A brief recess, and we'll ask the clerk to call the next docket number.
Our next item is item number 15, Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation.
Welcome, and if you could please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Quincy White, and I'm proud to serve as the new president and CEO of the Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation. I'm also joined by our attorney, Steve Davis, our engineer, Dan Ruby, as well as our chief strategic officer, Ashley Jarvis. It's a privilege to be here today to present a project that represents the best of what can happen when a city and its nonprofits, its residents come together to meet urgent needs with compassion, strategy, and vision. Today, we respectfully request your support for the rezoning of a vital new partnership between V B C D C and NAMI Coastal Virginia. Together, we propose a transformative initiative, 60 new affordable housing units, including a best practice of an integrated community with a small allocation dedicated to individuals living with a mental health diagnosis, and a new regional headquarters for NAMI, offering office, classroom, outreach space to dramatically expand access to free mental health services for our community. This development, located near the intersection of Princess Anne Road and Community Park, Community Park, well, I'm sorry, Community College Place, directly addresses two of the most pressing challenges facing Virginia Beach: the affordable housing crisis and the growing demand for accessible, community-based mental health services. Importantly, this effort reflects years of planning and meaningful engagement with the community. We've actively incorporated feedback from neighbors and stakeholders at every stage, and that dialogue will continue throughout development. We understand that trust is built through transparency and partnership, and that has guided our approach. This project has also reflected the support of city council. In fact, the council voted unanimously to donate this land to V B C D C specifically for this use, a powerful testament to the city's commitment to addressing housing and mental health together in a bold and forward-looking way. The site is ideally located near transit, jobs, medical care, and retail, precisely where this kind of thoughtful, integrated development should be. And with critical funding deadlines approaching, a delay in rezoning would jeopardize our ability to move forward and secure the resources needed to make this vision a reality. I shared this today, not only as the leader of V B C D C, but as a longtime supporter of NAMI Coastal Virginia, and as someone deeply committed to creating a healthier, more inclusive Virginia Beach. This is a moment of opportunity and action. On behalf of our team and partners, I urge you to support this rezoning and help us keep this transformative project on track. Thank you for your time, your service, and your consideration. At this time, I will yield the rest of my time to our chief strategic officer, Ashley Jarvis.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to talk with you this afternoon about our proposal. I want to take a minute to highlight our community engagement process and the history with this project. A little over four years ago, we began working with NAMI and Councilman Berluci and Councilman Remick to identify a site in Virginia Beach for this project. We evaluated four other sites, which were not feasible for reasons of high noise, a crash zone area, or not a large enough site for the project. The city brought us this location in early 2023, and a city-owned land, and we began discussions about their donation of the property. So in October 2023, we went out to Buckner Woods Homeowners Association and met with the community and took in their concerns. We walked the property with them as well. We heard concerns over tree mitigation, wetlands, traffic, noise pollution, light pollution, and property values. Over the next several months, we worked with our design team. Over the next several months, we worked with our design team further on the project concept, and we held a design charrette in May of 2024, which was attended by community stakeholders, supporters, and the Buckner Woods Homeowners Association. At that design charrette, we gave an overview of our project proposal, as well as NAMI services, talked through components of resident screening and what that would look like, and then took in feedback on elements of design that we could incorporate feedback on, such as fence style, lighting style, brick color, building height, things of that nature. In November 2024, we held a community engagement session, which was attended by neighbors and stakeholders, where we presented our conceptual site layout ahead of the rezoning process. During that time, you know, we continued a conversation around building height and highlighted how we have incorporated feedback into the design. You know, we heard loud and clear that a five-story building was not desirable. So our maximum height here is three stories. We further worked through the rezoning process to move some of the units off to the far right to reduce the number of units that are closest to the adjacent property line. In addition, the NAMI office space will also be in that center building, which further reduces the residential units right up against that property line. And, you know, we incorporated feedback around color tones, lighting style, having a solid fence to work through foot traffic, and having a landscape buffer that would also prevent cut-through traffic to the neighboring community. And so our next steps, we have a rendering reveal scheduled for July 31st that we've invited the community and stakeholders to. We've also offered to have one-on-one meetings and go back and walk the community with them again and highlight the ways that we can incorporate feedback into our design. We're committed to being a good neighbor, being a responsible neighbor, and contributing to property value and contributing to the, you know, services and housing stock for our citizens. During the informal session this morning, there were some items that came up that we wanted to talk through. We are committed, ahead of the city council hearing, to incorporating the shared use path along Princess Anne Road. We are also amenable to looking at an alternate fence color. And we wanted to highlight that the deviation that we're requesting is only for the building on the far left. Due to the 30-foot easement required by public utilities due to that water line, we can only achieve a 10-foot building setback on that far left. But the rest of the buildings will have a 15-foot building setback with a 10-foot landscaping buffer. And we'd be happy to answer any other questions for you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Camp?
With regard to the comments you just made about the setback, does that also include the two dumpsters?
Yes. So the dumpsters and the three-story building will be moved to be outside of the deviation where they would have a 15-foot setback.
Thank you.
Commissioner Plumley?
So, the area median income, can you tell us a little bit about that in our area?
So the area median income is set by HUD each year, and it's adjusted for family size. So this project proposes to serve a limit of up to 80% of the area median income. That ranges for household size, so from a family of one, you know, up to a family of four or six. That could range from an income of approximately maybe $36,000 for a single up to $75,000 or $80,000 for a household of four.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Cromwell?
You spoke of your meetings with Buckner Woods in November?
Yes.
It's, we got an email from Mr. Jordan Moore, and he said you all haven't been in contact since then, and there's been the addition of another building since he, or since you all met last time?
Yeah, so our last conversation with Mr. Moore in November, you know, centered around the concept design that was going to be submitted as a part of our rezoning application, and that our next steps would be to move forward with that application, with that design, and then have another engagement session with the rendering reveal. We were open to continued conversation and dialogue and invited them to come in and talk with us. My understanding was some of the concerns were not only with our engagement process, but with city processes, and they were going to take that, you know, with, up with their council rep and city staff. So we have been open to that communication. We did reach out to Mr. Moore after being notified of his letters to have an engaged, a one-on-one meeting ahead of our next public meeting, and we'll go back out and walk the community with them again, make sure we've incorporated their concerns, and highlight the ways that we have strived to do that through this process.
Mr. Davis, if you could state your name for the record, please?
Yes, I'm Steve Davis, counsel for VB-CDC here. I think that perhaps the additional building that is being referred to, this is actually an enhancement in the project. Originally, if you have the rendering up there, there's a middle building, and the middle building contained, was longer than it is on the plan that has been proffered, in part in response to trying to move away some of the units from the residents, as well as to increase traffic flow and respond to other staff comments. The new building is actually a reduction of the building that fronts directly on the shared property line with the Buckner Woods neighborhood and is now moved over to the wooded area that borders the TCC project. So it's actually now a smaller building back there along the property line, common shared property line with Buckner Woods.
And how about as far as landscape between the Buckner Woods and the main building? Is that going to be enhanced at all as far as you've got a three-story building looking down?
Yes, sir. So what we have there is, as was alluded to, we are going, that building is, and the dumpsters, as was asked by Commissioner Camp, that are off to the side are going to be moved closer, approximately five feet closer to Community College Place, allowing that to be outside of the building setback. And there will also be a 10-foot buffer and a six-foot privacy fence, which is a result of communications with folks as to how to minimize this, added across the back property line.
Has this been conveyed to Mr. Moore, the privacy fence and the landscape?
No, this just came up, I would say, within the last 36 to 48 hours, or less, that these were specific concerns. And so we have rushed through and, you know, have our engineer confirm for us in this period that what is, what we are proposing is feasible in order to accommodate the request. So really, we're continuing community dialogue right down to the very last hour here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Camp?
Thank you, sir. I did not hear the answer to Commissioner Cromwell's question about landscaping between that center building and the property line. I heard about a fence. We see a color rendering here that appears to have some type of vegetation between the building and the property line, and then we were given a black-and-white drawing that does not have it. Which one should we be looking to as the conceptual plan as far as vegetation there?
It would be the color, and I'm sorry, the acoustics in here are not great, as you guys know. There will be a 15-foot building setback and a 10-foot landscape buffer, and obviously the 10-foot landscape buffer will be on the inside of the six-foot privacy fence that not only serves to block views, but also to secure the neighborhood to the rear, that there'll be no access.
So if I'm on the Buckner Woods side, just baby-step it for me, am I going to see fence or vegetation?
Yes. You're going to see, I'm sorry, you're going to see both, because you're going to see both. I didn't mean to be cute there. You're going to see a fence first, and behind it, you're going to see vegetation.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Are there any additional questions for the applicant at this time? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have for this application?
We definitely have three, but we might have four. I'm just having a hard time reading the handwriting on one of the numbers. Our first person would be Teresa Stanley for number 15.
It sounds like Ms. Stanley is deferring, is that what I'm hearing?
To her friend.
To her friend.
Okay. Our next speaker would be Kay Florrie.
Hello.
Hello.
If you could please state your name for the record.
I'm Kay Florrie, members of the Planning Commission. I'm a dedicated citizen of Virginia Beach and the advocacy chair of the Interfaith Alliance at the beach. Additionally, I'm a member of Tidewater Sores of Justice. Our organizations collaboratively address social justice and human right issues within our community, guided by compassion and nonpartisan advocacy. We have strongly supported the NAMI CDC project located at Princess Anne Road and Community College Place over the last four years. This site is ideal for the development of affordable housing and supportive housing for individuals with mental health challenges, as envisioned by the partnership between VB-CDC and NAMI. The property's ample acreage and proximity to medical facilities make it a suitable location for this project. We urge you to expedite the process to facilitate the development of these 60 apartments, which include nine units dedicated to individuals living with mental health issues. Thank you for your consideration to rezone the 3.18-acre parcel to conditional B4 for such an important issue to address, the affordable housing for citizens of Virginia Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Florrie, one moment. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is in opposition, Margaret Diddy, followed by Linda Harino De Roy.
Hello. Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Margaret Diddy, and I live in the unit that is directly across from where the trash receptacle will be. It's on unit 107. My concerns are several. I am a retired mortgage underwriter. I have approved mortgage home loans for over 30 years for FHA, VA, VHDA, Conventional, Fannie-Freddie, the works. It's one thing to say I'm going to put in single-family homes next to Buckner Woods, and it be permanent residence, affordable housing, and let them move in and establish residency and be part of that community. It's another thing to rezone an area that you thought was going to be going to be donated to Tidewater Community College and say, okay, guess what, Mrs. Diddy, you're going to be living next to a possible mental facility? I don't know what you want to call it. I mean, granted, there's business offices, and you can go see a counselor and talk to them about your issues, and that's fine and well and great. But it's another thing to say I'm going to house possible people with mental disturbance issues, which, again, nobody's disclosed to us what type of issues we're dealing with. Are we dealing with people that are coming off drugs, who may have a relapse, and all of a sudden we have their drug pusher peddler person, whoever gives them drugs in our parking lot across the street while my grandchildren come over to visit me? I take issue with that, and rightfully so. Changing the zoning code for NAMI to go ahead and do their facility, I think, is a way of making it fit for them. But what about all the residents in Buckner Woods who have to live next to this so-called facility? What is that going to do to our property values and the marketability of those homes inside that project? Now, my mother left me this home. She had been at one of those meetings before she passed away, and she indicated that she had expressed those desires to whoever the representative was, who said, we'll get back to you, Mrs. Alman. Never did. Never once did. Now, being that I have approved many home loans for very deserving families, I am concerned. My husband's concerned. I'm concerned for my grandchildren coming over to visit. I think there needs to be just a tad bit more disclosure on what we're dealing with with this so-called mental thing, okay? I don't have a problem with it. I have no problem with counseling offices. But I do take exception to possibly living with somebody who might be psychotic, jumping that six-foot fence right behind my unit and harming myself, my neighbors, my grandchildren. And if you were in my shoes, I think you'd feel exactly the same way. Would you want to know that? Know that somebody could jump a six-foot fence and come into your, even though we have security? How would you deal with that? So these are my questions for you to consider. I'll try and rush it along. Are these apartment complexes to be sold?
If you could just pause, please, because your time is up.
Okay.
And we're very grateful that you're here, but we just have to be considerate to all the speakers for three minutes.
Okay.
So let me just ask the commissioners if maybe they have a question for you, okay?
Okay, yeah. If you could ask any questions, please, I would greatly appreciate, because I have several.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Plumley?
Ms. Denny, you say you live directly, is it behind the proposed larger unit that you live behind in the community?
If you count back from the lovely little trash thing right there, where it's stuck in middle building, we're in 107, which is, you can see the little forest up there, then you can see that roof that's right where that first bullet, there's of those homes, we're in 107, which is smack across from the trash receptacle.
Okay. And this is a home that you inherited from your mother recently?
Yes. Who had expressed, thank you, who had expressed concerns about this very same issue.
Okay. And, but you said you earned the impression this would be developed, but it was going to be for, was it student housing, or what was the idea for TCC?
We had assumed, you know, when she bought that, because it's got a beautiful, beautiful, you know, trees in that area, and it's probably those units had the most desirable because of the trees there, and it's the distance from the street. We were told when she purchased it that it was probably the city was going to donate it to TCC to build housing for students, you know, affordable housing, which is a good thing. And then all of a sudden, she got blindsided with the, oh, we might be building units for mentally ill people. And so she'd expressed her concern to whoever the NAMI person was, and nobody got back to her. I don't think they even got back to the association, to be quite frank.
Thank you very much.
So are there any other questions for our speaker?
Is this going to be apartment building? Are they renting out these units? Are they selling, or are they doing financing with FHA, VA?
So let me ask you, ma'am, have you had an opportunity to read the staff report?
Okay.
Have you had, have you had an opportunity to do that?
No.
Have you gotten a copy of that?
I got the notice in June, and this is about all the information that we've all gotten, which is not much disclosure.
Okay, so we have other speakers here today.
Okay.
The applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal, and so as we're all listening together, maybe some of your questions will be answered at that time, but we can get you a copy of the staff report so you can review the application.
Do you guys have a contact person to where I can talk with them personally and ask my questions, that's in charge of this project?
Do you know what? The applicant is here, and so I'm hoping Mr. Davis, for example, Ms. Jarvis, or Mr. White can speak with you after the hearing.
Okay.
And so to help reassure you and answer all of your questions.
Okay. So somebody that represents the city I can talk to.
Well, the applicant, not, Ms. Popple?
Well, the applicant supports NAMI. They don't support us, your people.
Ma'am, that contact information, can you bring me that, your letter? That contact information should be on the back. I just want to confirm it.
I think it needs to be stated that the staff reports are on the city website under Planning Department.
If not, I'll just talk to Buckner Woods and see if they can get their attorney involved.
Our last and final speaker is Linda Harino De Roy.
Howie.
Oh.
Sorry.
Howie.
Hello. Excuse me.
Welcome.
Thank you. A little bit nervous. Okay.
That's okay. Well, just take your time, take a deep breath, and.
Yes, deep breathing. I'm well aware. And I will get into a little bit of personal, which I wasn't going to do, but.
Can you please state your, please state your name for the record?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry about that. My first name's Linda, last name is hyphenated, last name Howing De Roy. I have lived two years now at the Buckner Woods. Alaskan, but passed through Alaska after 26 years, through Pocono Mountains to here. First of all, I need to clarify, I'm taking a different perspective than the last. First of all, I need to clarify, I'm taking a different perspective than the last, my neighbor. Very different perspective. And once again, similar to the folks who stood up and talked about the food pantry going up, my card also did not come till July 3rd, I'm going to say. And I am going to ask for a little bit more than three minutes. The primary reason is that Jordan Moore, who is the association's board president, is at work currently because he works for Operation Smile, and he probably will speak afterwards, I'm not sure. But I feel like I need to represent him also because this, just this past last Sunday, I went to his home, and for the very first time, he showed me that architectural design. I did attend in the last November the Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation that was held here. I met with Jessica, who at that time was the president, and I know we have a new president now, who I did not know. And I will tell you to clarify... I'm a little bit annoyed, all right? I'm going to be honest. Because in the beginning, when this whole started up, there was very good teamwork, communication, and so forth. But Jordan told me the first time he heard of all of these changes, which are drastic changes that was from originally planned, was July 3rd. Not only that, but the city council of District 10, our city councilperson, Rouse, if I'm pronouncing her name incorrectly, I apologize, only found out recently herself. to hear the new president and representatives of the Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation, no. To clarify, no, the communication has been very poor since November. Very poor indeed. Originally, this was supposed to be one building. It was designed to... for lower-middle-class families' income to be more affordable housing, and yes, NAMI was included. This is true.
Ma'am, pardon me for just one moment.
Sure.
You had made reference to Mr. Moore, who's part of the HOA. Are you part of the HOA? Are you representing... are you speaking on their behalf today?
I am, yes.
Okay, just for that clarification, because the HOA does receive 10 minutes, and so I just want to be fair and be consistent with our...
I'm trying.
You still have a few more minutes, but I just wanted to clarify that before we move forward.
Okay, well, let me speak this...
If you're speaking for the HOA, we just want to make sure that we give you the amount of time that you're able.
I do have a tendency to be a little bit wordy. I apologize. I'll try to be more succinct. So I am going to share a little bit personal. I am an individual with PTSD, anxiety, and depression. I've worked very hard on recovery, victim of domestic violence, but forget about that. I also am the caregiver of a 41-year-old Down Syndrome daughter, living in assisted living facility in Anchorage, Alaska, still, who is not only Downs, because those people are very independent, very incredible, smart folks. She's autistic, nonverbal, in addition to being intellectually disabled. I am also responsible for my younger sister with schizophrenia, severe schizophrenia, very difficult life in New York State, living in assisted living facility. So I am not opposed to CAMI. I would like to see them change the name for Mental Illness, because that is a stigmatizing title to give folks. But I know NAMI's been around a very, very long time. So is the ARC, Association for Retarded Citizens, because we don't use the word retarded either. Okay. So in regards to that, I am not opposed to having buildings to serve that population, target population. Okay. So I'm going to try to speed this up a bit. My understanding it was the City of Virginia Beach who was funding this project. If I got that wrong, please let me know. Because the first thing, I actually did some research. I put a packets together if y'all would like to have. I have three of them put together. The first thing that is going to significantly affect the building of this to begin with is due to the big, beautiful bill that went into law on July 4th, as you know, because there's going to be huge funding cuts, especially for folks on Medicaid, Medicare too, I believe, $1 trillion, as you might know, for the whole United States. And this is going to affect every state, maybe not Alaska right now, we won't go into that. However, you're going to have to find the City of Virginia, and the whole state is going to have to find another means to fill in this gap of funding. This is a huge amount of money to be lost. And money usually hits home for people, because without the money, you can't do anything. Okay, so I'll just leave that alone and continue. It's not just Medicaid, but it's the food also for the children, SNAP and so forth. And I don't know the whole demographics either of the individuals who are connected with NAMI. But I did research into this, and I am concerned about this architectural design with a little tiny trim of little trees. First of all, maybe Jordan will speak. He requested months ago the fence to be eight feet tall, not six feet, and maybe he will address that. But to get back to the trees, I have a different view of this. It's not just beauty preservation. But, and I have an article, study, research from Harvard and NAMI, that will tell you that the study of trees is very beneficial to improving one's mental health, reducing one's stress level, lowering blood pressure, combating extreme heat, and is particularly beneficial to children with attention deficit, hyperactivity disorder, as it helps them focus more. In addition, research demonstrates that trees are linked with a lower mortality rate and reduce crime and gun violence. So I cannot say that I believe many people in my community would not be satisfied, as the commissioner addressed, that little tiny line of trees. These are very old, old trees, hundreds of years old, some of those tall pine trees, and I'm not from here, so I don't know your trees, I'm sorry, but could be thousands of years old. And my personal request is that within 15 feet of our little white fence border that separates these two properties, that those trees remain standing and are not to be cut down. This I feel very passionate about. But I will leave it at that if that's... if you have any questions for me.
Sure. Well, thank you so much. Thank you for sharing all that with us.
The pamphlets of the research... I'm not a university student anymore, but if you would like to review some of these research, evidence-based research, I'd be happy.
Well, thank you. If there's anything that you would like to leave with the clerk, we welcome for the opportunity to review that. And commissioners, do you have any...
Which individual?
I'm sorry, right here, this lovely... can you raise your hand, please, Kristen?
Oh, yes, we already talked, hi, you know.
Oh, good. So you know each other?
Well, I mean...
Of course. Thank you.
Personal joke between us.
Okay, we have a question from Commissioner Cromwell.
You said in the initial plans that you first saw, it was one building?
Yes, sir.
And when did you see that?
Well, just as last November, that was the way it was.
So from November to now, you've gone from one to four buildings?
I can't tell you from the very beginning, because I'm a fairly new resident there. I will say it's called Buckner Woods because of the woods, which is true. But it's very possible from the very beginning, it sounded like it was one building plan. And yes, more than a year ago, this development community did invite members to discuss the design, but that hasn't been done in a very, very long time. When I saw this on Sunday, it was like my jaw dropped, like four buildings? Where did that come from? You know, and I'm sorry, what was...
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming out today. I don't see any further questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. The bottom line is I think it needs to be postponed a little bit to be talked about further, to compromise between the two properties.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
We do not have any other speakers at this time.
Mr. Davis, you're welcome to come back.
Thank you. First, we appreciate the shared comments. This is an open dialogue. We are going to be neighbors, and we're going to be good neighbors. And we're going to continue that. And the members of the VB CDC staff, as well as we have someone from NAMI here today, can answer questions. But as the application indicates, these are rental properties. They are affordable housing properties. This will be something that all applicants will have to meet those criteria, will be screened. And this is not, you know, an institutional facility. There are a specific number of units that are dedicated to serve people with mental health diagnosis, and that's actually the word we use. We don't say mental illness. And, you know, the reality of this, folks, is that this is a... whether we're building a specific project or something, this is what we're dealing with, is one in four people, whether they're diagnosed or not, have mental health concerns and issues. And so this is a much-needed project on both these levels, from affordable housing as well as for folks with a mental illness. Now, as to the history of the plans, actually, the plan that showed one building and five stories was actually something that was generated in collaboration with the city, between VB CDC and the city. That was never once we went to our engineers. The plan that was presented to the neighborhood in November of 2024, as you can see, had a single building on the back, as I mentioned earlier. We also reduced it from the five-story to multiple buildings, townhomes, honestly, to try to blend in at the citizens' request with something. So this didn't stick out as something different than what is already there. We do have a good bit of community. And all these things that we've done have been in response to input from citizens, communities, and trying to have a viable and successful project. And to the extent that there hasn't been communication, I think that's probably largely due to the fact that we're trying to do the right thing when we respond to a citizen concern. We think that the response to it will be apparent, and that we've lowered the buildings, we've blended in, and we've moved a number of the units away. And we're now committed to moving the main building, the middle building, even further away. We do have broad community support that's in the package here, including the folks that own and operate the hotel in the land that was under construction there that you see on that at the time. And we just think that this is a pressing need. It's a pressing time, and this is the right place, the city and VB CDC, which is, I think you all know, was set up by the city. Its board is appointed by city council. I think you're all familiar with that process. And that this has been something that the two parties have been working on together. We will continue our dialogue, and we'll be over here to answer any questions afterwards. And we look forward to a design charrette with them to really reveal the next iteration of the plans at the end of July.
Thank you very much, Mr. Davis. Are there any questions from commissioners? I have Commissioner Mount and then Commissioner Camp.
Thank you, guys, for coming in today. I think maybe this is a good opportunity for y'all to tell maybe a little bit of your story, what the mission is, who you help, because I think a little bit of... some of the fears are the unknown.
Sure.
And maybe, I think that would help educate me, as well as others that may be watching this or in the audience.
Now, we have two organizations. Your applicant is VB CDC, and this will be the group that acquires this, probably gets the property donated from the city and will develop it should this move forward. They're partnered with NAMI. You want to hear from both, or do you want to... because probably they're better to speak to what the mission is of both those organizations than I am.
Yeah, I would more so love to hear from NAMI to tell their story a little bit. Thank you.
Welcome.
I am Susannah Yurovsky, and I say NAMI. Some people say NAMI. Anyway, so I think, you know, what we are battling a lot at the National Alliance on Mental Illness is stigma, and that's a lot of what we heard today from the one person that was in opposition. There's kind of that idea that someone who lives with a mental illness or a mental health condition is completely psychotic and unable to engage or violent, and that's just not the case. Yes, somebody who's unmedicated might experience or act in such a way like that. But so out of these 60 units, nine of them will be for individuals that live with a mental health condition. But it's not a hospital. It's not a psychiatric, you know, institution by any means. It's just affordable housing for individuals that, for whatever reason, are unable to... a lot of the times, let's say, I know several individuals who have schizophrenia, who are unable to hold down full-time jobs. Now, they're wonderful people. They tend to keep to themselves, and they're unable to afford by, you know, a single apartment at the rates. I mean, the affordable housing is a huge problem. And so these nine units will be for individuals who are able to live on their own, but then they're going to be able to attend the support groups, or the free classes, or the free presentations that will be offering throughout the week. But I think the image of a person with bipolar or schizophrenia that's going to be, you know, jumping over fences and attacking neighbors is extremely unfair and really hurtful to individuals living with a mental health condition. Now, that does not mean there are no guarantees in life. I'm sure that my neighbors, I live in a single-family home residential neighborhood, I'm sure that they were very surprised when our 19-year-old daughter at the time experienced psychosis for the first time and was definitely acting out in a way that was very surprising to everybody. So there are no guarantees, and we definitely at NAMI cannot guarantee that a situation might arise, but something might arise with the 51 other units. And hopefully, I've answered, like, or put some, you know, concerns at ease.
Thank you. You know, I think one of the... in my opinion, there's two things within our city that doesn't have enough emphasis on one of them being mental health and another being senior housing. I think both of those things are going to have to be addressed in the near future, and I think this project is a start. And I hope that we can help to move this forward to city council. And I do think that there needs to be more engagement made with the community, one more of an education piece, so that they understand what's going on, and it's not, you know, the fear of the unknown isn't there. You know, as they said, as you said, one in four people live with mental illness. So even within the multifamily that's behind where this development will be, one in four people there are also dealing with issues. So the help may be right around the corner from them. So I would hope that we can all keep an open mind with this as we move forward. It is something that's absolutely needed within our community. It is in a wonderful spot. It is in a wonderful spot, but I'll reserve more of my comments for a little bit later. So thank you.
No, thank you.
Commissioner Camp and then Commissioner Hippen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir.
In the rebuttal remarks that were just made by both of you, the term affordable housing was used. And for us, affordable housing is a term of art. It has a specific meaning. In the staff report, the term attainable housing was used. Could you please clarify which of these is represented by this project?
So we tend to use the-
Ashley, come on, come on.
So we tend to use the word affordable and attainable interchangeably. The city actually has a new campaign around affordable housing and has switched the verbiage to attainable housing, housing that's attainable to all based on your personal circumstances. So this project does have a maximum income limit of 80% of the area median income to target housing for our workforce populations at the lower income tier that need, you know, affordable, attainable, quality housing.
Thank you. Will this project be submitting an application to the city's workforce housing program?
The application will not go through the city's workforce housing program. We will submit an application for funding from the city, their Home Housing Opportunity Fund, which limits, income limits to 80% or less.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the clarifications.
Okay. Commissioner Hippen?
Thank you to the two ladies that just spoke. You answered the questions that I had, just so you know.
Okay, first of all, are there any more questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time and consideration and service.
At this time, we'll open the floor for more discussion and entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application. And I will comment that while community outreach is absolutely always encouraged, it is not required. So when the community gets involved and they make suggestions, sometimes those suggestions are incorporated and sometimes they are not for other reasons. But that is not an absolute requirement. It's just desirable. You still have at least another 30 days to make comments because this commission is merely advisory, and a vote will happen at city council. So I encourage the neighbors who are concerned to continue that dialogue and to try to make this application one that works for everyone. I do think it's very important that we advance this project. And as I understand it, they are on a very tight timeline for funding, and I'm very concerned that a delay might actually kill the project, which I think we need. So I am in favor of approving it, and I appreciate everyone's input. Good luck.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there a second?
I would like to second my assistant commissioner's motion. I do agree that we need to have affordable and attainable housing, and I think that this is an ideal project. Thank you for working with the neighbors. That is important. Keep listening. One of my things, if you've ever watched any of these meetings, is that I want to know if you've interacted with the community, and I believe you have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Hold on one second, Commissioner Plumley. I just would like to reinstate the motion. We have a motion on the floor for approval from Commissioner Beiler, seconded by Commissioner Hippen. Are there any commissioners abstaining? And now, is there any discussion? Commissioner Plumley?
Essentially, there were two complaints presented to us. There was the circumstance of there being individuals with a mental illness at this location with some identification of having a mental illness, which is essentially all that's happening here. It's about an affordable place to live is really the essence of it, no matter the terminology that one needs to use. And the second being that the design had evolved over time without sufficient community input. Those seem to be the sole issues. It was brought up by one person objecting that their parent had believed this was going to be dedicated to TCC for potentially for student housing. And I would submit that this is probably going to be a far quieter location with the plan that's come before us. And I would be greatly surprised if there's any interaction of significance on a negative note. And in fact, there may be people that are living adjacent to it who may someday have a family member in need of a place like this. So for those reasons, I'll support it.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson.
Yes, I'd like to say that I have been discussing this with a lot of people. I am in favor of the project. We do need this badly. And I have suggested to our chairperson, since we do not have a District 10 representative, that I would thank myself and Commissioner Camp. We are the closest to that location to be the defunct liaison, and we would like to be involved with the community meetings. We want to make sure that, Mr. Davis, make sure that we know everything that's going on and be involved with from now until city council. So that's, you know, whatever we can do to help and help the residents.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mouch?
I did want to say that we do have an opportunity here because city council is on a break for the summer, and so there's an extra-large gap there between, as was stated earlier, we're not the final decision-makers, we're just giving recommendations. I do believe that there's sufficient time within that timeframe for the applicants to go out to the community and try and work out something that's going to be palatable for everybody. They have been amenable to making some changes that have been stated by some of the commissioners, and it will reflect that, hopefully, going forward with the proffers once it gets to city council. And so that continued dialogue is definitely needed. I think as we are all human, we all make mistakes. We all say things, we do things that are maybe not the most appropriate at the time. And I think it's just incumbent upon us to always strive to do better. So, you know, myself included, I think let's always make sure that we're just trying to do better for ourselves and our neighbors. So thank you.
Commissioner Camp?
I wanted to thank the applicant for adjusting the issues that were identified when it came to us, really just before the site visit, that the omission of the shared-use path along Prince of Sands seemed to be easily resolved. Moving a building five feet, to my surprise, was easily resolved. Moving dumpsters was easily resolved, and I'm glad that that's what happened, that coming in with a lot of exceptions makes it harder. And if they can be easily resolved, well, great. It goes forward as a cleaner, better application for everyone, so thank you for that. While I appreciate Commissioner Anderson's offer of my services, and he's right, it's there, I am your neighbor, but I'm no substitute for the city council member. And in the absence of a planning commissioner for District 10, I would certainly recommend to all the constituents and the various parties who are stakeholders in this project, at this point, with us about to make a recommendation, it passes into city council's hands. And although they may be on hiatus for their meeting schedule, they're not on hiatus for their engagement with the community. And that, I think, is your best individual to keep informed and to guide you through the work with the constituents in her district. But if I can help you, call me.
Okay. Hearing no other discussion, we have a motion on the floor, and staff will now call the The vote is open.
By a recorded vote of 10 to 0, item 15, Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation has been recommended for approval. Our next agenda item is Agenda Item 18, Jeffrey and Karen Barrett.
Hello. Good, thank you for being here. If you want to just pull the mic down and state your name for the record.
My name is Karen, not Karen. It's I-N, not E-N.
Thank you for that clarification, Ms. Barrett, Karen Barrett. So if you could just tell us a little bit about the application that you're asking for today?
My family are animal lovers. There's three things my family fights for, and those are the ones without voice, their children, elderly, and animals. And so my mom being in the vet, my niece a vet, my granddaughter studying to become a vet, I've been blessed with all these wonderful rescues. And I stop at six because I know my limit. And I, coming from New York, where we had ducks and everything in a housing area like the one I live in, I was surprised that there was a number. And so I didn't realize there was only four. And so my granddaughter for Christmas gave us two tiny Yorkshire terriers for Christmas siblings, and that brought us up to six. And then I realized we can't do that, so we had to go and get permission. And they're our family, they're our babies. I don't know if any of you rescue animals, but if you've ever rescued a breeder, a female breeder, I've rescued two, one from Pennsylvania and one from the Blue Ridge Mountains. They hid behind the couch for a year. I would have to put a chain around their neck to put them outside. It was bitter cold, and I'd have to pull the chain to get them back in. They were so afraid. It took a year to build confidence and trust. So yes, if I could have more, I would. But I know I'm asking for a blessing here, and that's why I'm in front of you.
Thank you so much for being here today, Ms. Barrett. Do we have any questions for the applicant? No questions, but we understand there is a speaker here today, so if you can go sit back down, and then we'll let the speaker speak.
Okay.
Thank you.
Our first speaker is Anthony McKenzie, followed by Amy Engler.
Hello.
Hi, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Anthony McKenzie, and I'm a homeowner in Virginia Beach subdivision, Hillcrest Farms, where this young lady wishes to, I guess, get approved for a kennel. Currently, I know Virginia Beach, I think, allows four dogs. She has six. And our concerns, I'm not here as a board member, even though I'm on the board. The next speaker, Amy, is on the board as the vice president. She'll speak on behalf of the board, so I'm speaking on behalf of McKenzie. I've been through a lot of neighborhoods in my 70 years plus, and I've never really seen a kennel any kind in a residential area like ours, where it's nothing but homes. There's no businesses nearby. It's all housing. We have 308 homes in our housing area. And so I look at this, and of course, I object to it. I tried to look up, and I gave it to Amy because I thought she was speaking first, but Virginia Beach Section Code 223 gives guidelines on building kennels. And it states it has to be 100 feet from the next property line. Other, behind these, this house, there's only like 32 feet between the back of their house and the fence. So I know it doesn't meet the requirements of 100 feet. So there's other situations as well, and I don't want to get too much into what Amy's going to talk about, but I just think the noise level is going to be so bad. I mean, thankfully, their house is on the backside where they're building the New Elba Road, which is a good thing, and then they live on the cul-de-sac, and one side is the cemetery. But they do still have several houses, one directly behind them and one on an angle behind them. But dogs, when they bark, can be very loud. I know my wife walks all through the neighborhood every, almost every day, and she knows where all the dogs are. And of course, they all bark when she walks by, in the house, out the house, whatever. But so I just, my point is, I just think it's a nuisance to have, I bless the lady for doing that. I mean, how many people take under their, you know, that many animals to care for? I think it's a great thing for them to do. I just don't think it's something that we should have in a residential area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the speaker? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amy Engler.
Hello.
If you could please state your name for the record, and if you're representing a homeowners' association, the name of it.
Okay. My name is Amy Engler, and I'm representing Hillcrest Farms Homeowners Association. I'm the vice president, and I was surprised to see the sign in the neighborhood. We do have an application that homeowners can submit for variances in our guidelines and our bylaws, which we have not received an application at all from this homeowner. It looks like it's, she wants just a variance to have six dogs rather than have a business of having a kennel like Sterling Meadows down the road. So I don't know if, we do not allow businesses in our declaration or our homeowners' association. And so this would take precedence there, but she would, I feel, have to go through the process of the ACC application and go through the board of directors, how we do to paint our house, to change the color of a door or anything like that. The other thing is, is the city ordinance, how is she, what is her business plan? What, I mean, there's a lot of questions that we need to have answered. And if she went through the process of the review, we would get those answers. So the board is against it. I'm speaking for the five members of the board, and that's all I have, really.
Okay, well, thank you so much for being here. Are there any questions from commissioners?
So to my understanding, you didn't know that they had six dogs. It's not that they're applying to get six dogs. They already have six dogs.
They have six dogs.
So you didn't know?
I just heard that today.
Okay.
Yes.
Commissioner Cromwell?
Are there any part to your bylaws that specifically prohibit or speak to the number of dogs in a household?
No, but we do not allow businesses or-
What business are you speaking of? She, I don't see where she's asking for a business.
Well, I thought a dog kennel was a business. Having a dog kennel is a business.
I think it's, correct me, Holly, if I'm wrong, she's asking for a variance for the number of dogs kept at her residence. They're not for sale. They're not breeding.
Exactly. So I think maybe there might be some wordsmithing, where we can either ask our attorney or our zoning administrator for the kennel, a conversation. It sounds to me, what I'm hearing both from you and our previous speaker, that you're concerned that the applicant is running a business out of her home.
Correct.
When, what I'm hearing is that she owns six dogs and that our ordinance allows four dogs for all residents in our city. And if you have more than four, you have to apply, which Ms. Barrett is- you have to apply, which Ms. Barrett is doing for this application. She, and we will have her come back up for rebuttal, but it's my intention, she's not having a business. She's just owning and loving these six dogs.
I understand that now. I did not know that. And from the signage, it said kennel.
Absolutely, and I think that's very fair. And we're all learning. And if you would indulge us, I'm going to ask our zoning administrator, Mr. Kemp, for that clarification.
Right. Residential kennel is just the use category that our ordinance calls out for that. You know, the chairwoman was absolutely right. We only permit four dogs. Anything over, you'd need a use permit. And that's just where it got classified when the ordinance was written years ago. So in this case, there is no business proposed. The dogs will be kept in her house. So the provisions of Section 223 really don't apply as long as the dogs are kept in her house. But there is no, and it is conditioned such, that there's no commercial operation. It will only be her dogs, the six dogs that are there permitted on the property.
Okay.
So hopefully that helps. It helps you better understand what's happening. And that's part of our job here is to help, you know, residents better understand what's going on with each of these applications.
Okay. Yeah, well, we didn't know.
Sure.
So that makes more sense. Would it limit her to six rather than, does it give her a number then? Because I'm novice at this.
Sure, no, we appreciate that. So for, she has requested six. And so we have put in this application, no more than six.
Okay.
And also, by the applicant's very words herself, she said, and I heard this correctly, she knows her limits, that she received, she had four dogs and received two as a gift, and that her heart is so full of love. And then when she learned that this is our requirement for our city, as it would be for you or I if we had multiple dogs, would be to come here today to be in compliance.
Okay. No problem. I love dogs, too.
Yeah, we have one more question from Commissioner Beilers.
Now that you know the intent is not to have a business, but just to have six pets, as I believe the applicant stated, like members of the family, do you and does the homeowners association still object?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. Yes, Ms. Barrett, you now have, if I was the first one to clarify, if there are any more speakers?
There are no other speakers at this time?
Ms. Barrett, now you have an opportunity to come back for rebuttal.
I have a question for her.
Oh, pardon me.
Have you had anyone complain about your dogs making too much noise?
No, when I went around to the neighbors, they didn't even know I had all those dogs. They said they never hear them.
Thank you.
I just, I teach real estate in my spare time. And my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, a variance is for an individual when, for example, if I had a gas station and lightning struck the gas station and it burnt down, and I am asking for a hardship, and so I'm asking for a variance. A conditional, and that's only for one person. A conditional use permit, which I've done, is for my own personal, and it's not going to benefit any, anybody else. Where a variance can benefit other people, such as in a gas station when you rebuilds it. But it usually deals with a hardship. And that's why I didn't check variance or anything because in my mind, when I was teaching, that's what the book said, and that's what I taught. Unless Virginia Code has it wrong. So I want to thank all of you for being understanding. And thank you.
Thank you for being here today. Are there any questions for Ms. Barrett? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll now open the floor for discussion or to entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this item.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Kostin to approve, and a second by Commissioner Schoonover. Is there any further discussion?
The vote is open. By a recorded vote of 10 to 0, item 18 for Jeffrey and Karen Barrett has been recommended for approval. Our next item is item 19 for Bradley and Nettie Kane.
Hello. If you could please state your name for the record.
Bradley Kane.
Nettie Kane.
Thank you for being here today. Tell us about your application.
We just got 13 dogs. We didn't know we wasn't supposed to have 13 dogs. We had to get a conditional use permit. So we applied for that, so that's why we're here.
I'm sorry, could you say that again? I couldn't hear you.
We got 13 dogs. We didn't, we didn't, we got 13 dogs. We didn't know we were supposed to have one of these permits. So we found out, we applied for it. That's why we're here.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, are there any questions for the applicant?
Yes. How'd you get 13?
The mother dog had five the first litter. We kept them, and she had seven. So we just, we kept them all.
Dog needs a TV, okay.
Dog lovers.
Commissioner Plumley?
Have you had a chance to speak to your neighbors about your request for a conditional use permit?
Yeah, I spoke to them.
What did they tell you? Was there, what was their reaction?
All of them's cool, but like maybe one. And they, you know, now, we're talking now, but at first, he was cool. Then he got an attitude because I hung a Trump flag up. So after that, it went downhill from there. So that was, that's the biggest issue, is the Trump flag.
He was cool in the beginning.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you for coming down today. Can you tell us when you bought this home?
Yeah, September last year.
And did you have the dogs at that time?
Yeah, we come from West Virginia with them.
All 13?
All 13.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
One more.
Sorry.
What kind of dog?
They're Chihuahua, Yorkies, Churkies.
So they're little itty bitties?
Yeah, they little, they little.
Yeah, they're small dogs.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on this application?
Yes, we have three speakers. Our first speaker is Judy Champ, followed by Mark Hamilton.
Hello.
Hi.
Please state your name for the record.
Judy Champ.
Thank you, Ms. Champ.
And I live right next door to them. I've been in my house for 28 years. The previous owner did not have any dogs, so weren't used to hearing dogs bark or, you know, having any activity. So when they moved in, it was like, oh, there's dogs. I had no issue with it. They're very well behaved dogs. They do not stay outside. They're, they're not running a kennel. It's their pets, they're little, just little guys. My dogs, I have dogs, too. They don't, you know, they don't have a problem with it. My entire backyard backs up to their house. And I mean, I'm not woken up in the middle of the night. I'm not, you know, Nettie loves, they both love those dogs. They're all vaccinated. They're all in compliance with, you know, what the city requires. They just didn't know when they moved here that they couldn't have 13. And like I said, I don't have any, any issue with it. I know that they love them, and they clean up after them every day. She's out there picking up their poop, and she's out there spraying their yard. And I don't have any, any issues with it. If anybody should, it should be me because I'm right next to them, so.
Well, we appreciate you coming down today. Commissioners, are there any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Hamilton, followed by Reggie Edlow.
Hello.
Good afternoon. Mark Hamilton, we live diagonally across. The other speaker, Reggie, I left and is not able to be here. So the applicant did not talk to us. We also have dogs. We're not against dogs. Dogs in our neighborhood bark all the time. But more often than not, these dogs are, you know, they're since n or something done to them, you know, to correct that action. You know, I walk my kid to and from the bus stop. And the dogs would bark and charge the fence. My wife, the other day, was out weeding in the yard. For 20 minutes, these dogs, in excess of four, sometimes up to nine in the front yard, are barking for no reason while we're across the yard, or across the street in our yard. I leave and I go to work in the afternoons. These jugs, dogs charge the fence and barking at us for no reason. You know, Reggie is the next door neighbor. I've seen the dogs charge the fence and bark at them countless times while they're going in and out. They spend less time on their front porch enjoying what they have out there than they used to. Like I said, we're not against dogs. We understand dogs are going to bark. Our dogs bark at the dogs behind us. We put them in the house, you know, if they can't correct that action right away. You know, I have questions. You know, like I said, we weren't talked to by the neighbors. You know, they said there's not going to be breeding within the staff report. But in their own admission, they have, they kept two litters. So they bred them, and they're multiplying. And are they going to continue to keep the litters if, you know, if that happens? If this is approved, what actions are going to be taken to ensure that they comply with the no more than 13 dogs? That there's no more than four out at a time? So those are, those are my questions. Animal control has pretty much blown off some of the issues that have, you know, been brought to them. You know, between a few of us, we can, you know, put out videos and show that these actions are happening. So like I said, we're not against the dogs, but the barking incessantly, the charging the fence. You know, we've gone to walking across the other side of the street, but that doesn't help. You know, we're, we have to look before we take our dogs out of the house to put them in the car or take them on a walk. You know, so all for the dogs, happy to have them. But they've become a nuisance. You know, we've, we've looked at it. They've created more noise in the neighborhood for the incessant barking of over 30 seconds, 30 minutes. So like I said, all for the dogs. Just wish that there was more being done or we'd been talked to about it. And then if it is approved, what's going to happen? Whose onus is that going to fall on to ensure compliance?
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Are there any questions for the speaker? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If our last speaker, Mr. Edlow, has left, we have no more speakers.
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate it. Mr. and Mrs. Kane, you're welcome to come back up for rebuttal.
So the issue, we didn't talk to him because he lived diagonal from us. We didn't think that he was part of our neighbor. You know what I mean? We talked to the one on the sides of us and behind us. We didn't know he was, you know what I mean? So that's why we never said nothing to him. But as far as the dogs charging the fence, dogs are going to bark, dogs are going to do that. Yeah, they don't, they don't bite. They don't, they're not aggressive dogs. They just, they see something, they run after it. You know what I mean? A squirrel, bird, another dog. That's what our dogs do. You know, he's got dogs. All you hear them dogs barking 6, 7 o'clock in the morning, ain't nobody saying nothing about that. You know what I mean? Because they're dogs. Dogs are going to bark. You know, dogs are going to be dogs. So that's all I have to say.
They're not aggressive at all.
And as far as having more dogs, when the mother dog had the dogs, we didn't want to get rid of dogs. We don't, we feel that if we're going to give somebody a dog, they might mistreat it. You know what I mean? Is she going to get pregnant again? No, because she's like 15 years old. She's not going to get pregnant again. You know what I mean? So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Plumley?
Are the, are the other dogs spayed or neutered?
Some are and some not.
And you're not intending to breed them, or?
No, we're 13, we're good with 13. That's enough. We're good with 13.
So then you're not, you wouldn't object to a condition that they all be spayed or neutered?
I mean, yeah, well, yeah. I mean, it takes a lot of money to do that.
We're working on it.
There are places in our community that provide that reduced cost for spay and neutering animals. If there was a condition that required you to go under a review in two years to see if you're in compliance, would that be objectionable to you?
Absolutely. You can come once a year if you want.
I don't want to go at all. But you wouldn't object to that?
I don't object to none of that, no.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Heflin?
Being a rescued fur person or, you know, fur baby person, I do know that the SPCA should be able to help you with that. But I do agree with my brother commissioner here. I think that 13 is a bunch of them. And the possibility of them reproducing if they are not spayed and neutered is strong. They're, they're dogs. They're dogs. Have you thought of trying to adopt, you know, some of them out, or?
No, I would never get rid of none of my dogs.
You'd never get rid of them?
For nothing, no.
Like our kids.
Like, so, so when we bought our house, we installed gates inside of our house and our doorways so we could separate the females from the males when they're in heat. Like, if you come to our house, we went to the fence store and had outside gates put inside our house just to have them separated, so that doesn't happen.
Okay.
And we put a chain link fence in our front yard so they can't get out the yard. We put a privacy fence in our backyard so they can, you know what I mean? Yeah, so we went above and beyond just to make sure they was good.
So what do you say, what's your response to your neighbor that says that they are a nuisance when they're out there? Is my question. they are a nuisance when they're out there is my question?
I don't pay no mind to people like that.
Oh, no, I mean, but, but he's your neighbor and, and you know, we have to coexist in society and, and that's a question. I mean, you know, I, I told a story earlier today about when my mother kept one of my dogs when I was out to sea. And then she was outside of Philly and I brought him down here and there was a lady that always called the police to send them over there. Oh, the dog's barking. And the last time that it happened, the dog was here in Virginia Beach. And when the police came by outside of Philly, she said, well, that woman must have damn good hearing because the dog is in Virginia Beach. So the question that I have for you is, we have to coexist with our neighbors.
Right.
What?
All right, so, 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 so when we moved here, you know, school was out. You know what I mean? So we didn't really know that the, there were kids live next to us, the school bus route, none of that. So then after, you know, the school started back up, we knew at three o'clock, he would walk down to the bus stop. You know what I mean? So we would try to keep the dogs in, you know what I mean? But we can't keep our dogs in the house every time somebody walks outside. You understand what I'm saying? They, they gotta go to the bathroom.
I, I do understand.
They like to play, you know what I mean? So I can't help it if your wife's in your yard picking weeds and my dog goes outside and barks. I can't help that. You know what I mean? You go inside. Not my dog, my dog, 20 minutes, they're in and out. Our dogs are inside dogs, they don't go outside, use the bathroom, and that's it.
Okay. You, you answer my question. Thank you.
Commissioner Skunover?
If between now and the time when your dogs are spayed or neutered, anybody becomes pregnant, are you planning on keeping those dogs as well?
They won't become pregnant. They, if you, if you come to my house, you will see that I have, I have five foot gates in my doorways that, you know what I mean, they're lash, they're like an outside gate, they're inside my doorways. If they're, if they're in heat, they're put up. You know what I mean? There's no way to get pregnant. Would I keep them now? I wouldn't keep them, but there's no way for them to get pregnant.
I think you, I think you recognize that we're all a little worried because it's a lot of dogs. And we're just hoping that they don't have more puppies soon.
13 is enough for me. I'm done. 13, I'm good.
I hear you. I don't know how much of the first times it was an accident, so I just don't know. Okay, without the end of my question.
Thank you. Commissioner Mouch?
Yeah. 13 dogs, whoo. How old are they? Just out of curiosity.
How old are they?
Yeah.
The, the, one of them, so most of them's five, then you got six and five, six and five.
Okay, all right.
You have the mama dog.
You have the mama dog, she's like 13, 14, 15, something like that.
Gotcha.
Yeah, 13.
Very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson?
Thanks for coming down. I'm definitely an animal person. My son rescued a mixed dog in Franklin living underneath a, a car with his buddy and brought him home. And we already had a cat and a dog and it's like, oh no, you know, I had three, but you know, we've been fostering for 12 years. But the 13 dogs and the limit of six or four concerns me, being 13. I, and the, the size of the house, the size of the lot, I, I just have a hard time being able to accept that with that many animals. I know you're good to them, but I don't think I can support this application.
For what reason?
The amount of dogs.
Oh, just the amount of dogs?
Yes, sir.
So you're saying my yard's not big enough?
For 13 dogs, no.
With the front and the back?
Yeah.
That's a lot of yard. It's a good bit of yard.
Did you build that, did you put that fence up when you moved in? Was that fence already there?
I, I put it up. I had, I had to pay, I paid to have it put up.
Right.
For that reason.
Okay. Now that's, I, I just, I am an animal lover, but I just, you know, there's, there's a certain point where, you know, we, we've got to be close or adhere to the ordinance. And 13 is pretty, pretty high. So, yeah, and we can't, yeah, you say you can guarantee that you're not gonna have another breed, but like you said, animals are animals. And, and I've got four dogs next door to me that they're all English Labs and they're, they get underneath the fence and they, I mean, they're great dogs, we love them, but yeah, it's, they will, they, they, they are who they are. I just, I'm just concerned about the quantity.
Commissioner Camp?
So I agree with Commissioner Anderson on this. And I, I just, I wanna say it to you straight, I don't wanna say it after you sit down, that I have a rescue also. I didn't ask for it to come into my life, but when it did, I gave it a home and I'm giving it love through the rest of its life. And I don't know how long that'll be. But my neighbors had certain expectations for their homes too. And in our community, four is the standard. And your neighbors were here before you were. And so I do have to give weight to the community and what they thought their neighborhood would be. That's not to discount anything that you said about the love for your pets and how you're caring for them and what you're trying to do. But they also have expectations and balancing them. I've been asked to look at heights and setbacks and stormwater rules and all kinds of things since I've been appointed up here. And what I try to do is look and say, is it a close call? Is there something special about this that's especially different? In this case, if our standard is four and you're more than three times over that standard, it's a lot harder for me to get there than if you were two over the standard like the lady that we just heard recently. So I just want you to know how I'm coming at it.
I have a question for you. For the conditions that have been written, can you just maybe share with us a little bit about your plan and how maybe you could mitigate some of the barking, some of the noise? Specifically, condition number two says no more than four dogs shall be permitted to be outdoors at one time. Have you kind of thought through maybe what that plan might be?
Yeah, so, so, so here in the next few months, we're gonna, we're gonna knock out our kitchen window, put a, a door to go out to the back door there, so we have two doors to go in and out the back. So there, there's only gonna be maybe one or two dogs that go out the front yard. So our whole backyard is a privacy fence. You know what I mean? We paid to have a privacy fence put in our whole backyard for that reason, you know what I mean? So four, four dogs in the front yard, I mean, I don't see that, you know, I mean, we can, we can handle that, you know what I mean? Like only, our dogs go outside, like if we leave and come back, they go outside, use the bathroom, and they're right back in with us. They're up, they're up. Our bus more than anything, you're like, you gotta be right where we're at, at all times, you know what I mean? So for anybody to say that our dog's gonna be outside leaving for hours, our dogs, our dogs are not outside dogs. They don't like the heat and they don't like the cold. You know what I mean?
Thank you very much. Commissioner Kostin?
Would you consider just keeping them in the backyard?
Yeah, 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 so that's, that's, you know, like I said, we just moved here in September. We just moved, we both, we come down here, bought a house, you know what I mean? And so we're just trying to do, we're not trying to do everything at one time, but we're gradually doing things to our house, you know what I mean? So eventually, they're, they're all gonna be in the backyard because we're gonna get the whole front yard redone, you know what I mean? Because it's got dips, there was like 10 trees in the yard, we had cut downs, we got roots growing, coming out everywhere. So we're eventually gonna get our whole front yard done right. So all the dogs are gonna be in the backyard. It's just gonna, it's not, it just can't happen, you know what I mean? I can't, I can't spend the money, spend the money, spend the money, you know what I mean? I gotta make it to spend it, you know what I mean?
That's what you mean?
Yes, we did.
Commissioner Plumley?
Yeah, I, I have a serious problem with 13 animals in one house also. I'm just trying to find a way, you know?
If you come to my house, you would not even know I had 13 dogs.
If I could address it. You know, part of this is gonna have to be respect.
Right.
If you're gonna respect your neighbor and not expect them to leave their yard to go inside to accommodate your dogs.
Right.
That's part of the give and take of trying to make something work. You know, I'm, I'm sort of thinking, we have 13 dogs at this house. They're there, okay? And we can reject the application and say, get rid of your dogs. Because that's really what this is about. I mean, that's what we're up against. So if we're gonna spend money changing the house, why aren't we spending money to spay and neuter these pets? And come up with a plan to make sure we accommodate the situation and, and be subjected to review, maybe annually or every other year, that you're in compliance, you know? But I'm not hearing that willingness to come forward, come along with them.
Oh, yeah, yeah, if you, I guess if you wanna come to my house every year, you can come every six months, it doesn't, like whenever, whenever you tell me that we're gonna come.
What I'm suggesting with that is that it not be complaints that are ignored. And if people are coming and saying, well, the noise is ongoing and we can't, they're putting the dogs out. How does a city regulate that? How do we come out and make sure you're going to comply? When you're telling me I can come out, you really think I'm gonna get in my car, leave my job and come see if you've got more than four dogs outside your house?
Yeah, I don't know, you know what I mean?
Well, I, no, 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 no. That's respect. Okay? And that's the problem. So I'm trying to see if we can make some accommodation for these animals because I love animals.
Yeah.
Not because I love the way you're presenting yourself.
Right.
Because I love animals.
I saw another thing that, that we're in the process of doing is that we got a chain link fence around our whole front yard. So we're gonna, we're, we're trying to get either something that goes in front of the chain link fence, to, to block the view, or put them privacy slats in there to block the view for that, you know what I mean? So, so they don't see people out in the yard, you know what I mean? They may hear them, but they don't see them. That's, you know what I mean? That's in the process too.
Thank you.
Commissioner Skunover?
I, I've been listening to this and I, I'm just, I think I'm just concerned that, well, one, I'm concerned that I think it's unusual to try to keep two litters of dogs that you have 13. And I guess I'm really, I'm surprised that you chose to do that. I, 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 I don't wanna take dogs away from you, but I really think you should contemplate that maybe that's not the healthiest situation for the 13 dogs. But, you know, I don't wanna ask you to get rid of them, but I, I also just not so sure that it's the best thing. I'm also concerned that, to me, after what you said earlier, where you said that, you know, you wouldn't give your dogs away for fear that they would be mistreated. And I, I, I'm worried that they're, that, that you cannot control unspayed neutered dogs from getting pregnant again. And it strikes me that you would want to keep the next ones too. I, and I'm just, I'm, I'm struggling with this because I love dogs. I'm obsessed with dogs, they're my, one of my favorite things. But I really am not so sure that 13 dogs in this house is good for anybody. Anyway, I don't know if you have any thoughts to add to that?
I love my dogs. I mean, I just, I can't get rid of my dogs. So, so it's like y'all having kids and then just giving one of your kids away, you know what I mean? It's, it's the same concept. I mean, could you give your kid away?
So let me, let me enlighten you, okay? So the dog that I told you was in Virginia Beach when they thought it was in Philly. I brought that dog from Spain when it was seven months old.
Right.
You are not talking to folks that, that don't understand. I think what Commissioner Plumley was trying to say is that there's, you're in a neighborhood. Here's a question I wanna ask you. Were you in, were you in a suburban area? And you said you moved here from West Virginia.
Right.
Were you in a suburban area or more of a rural area with the dogs down there?
Pretty much the same kind of, seems, yeah, it's the same community type.
Okay, I, I'm looking at your house, okay, from, from Google, Google Earth, okay? And, and, and it is, it is a smaller yard. Now, I have a large dog. I, I have a, I have a black lab. And I'm looking at the yard, 13 is a lot. And I'm, and, and I could not, I could not see somebody taking Bobby from me. I understand your point. The point that we're trying to make is that the city only allows four dogs and you can ask for more. So a lady came and asked for two over that, but you are, you've got enough dogs for four of your neighbors, essentially. So the question is, how do we grapple with that when you've got one of your neighbors that came in? And that's the neighbor that came in and said, hey, they're a nuisance. Is he alone? One neighbor came in and said, I don't have any problem with him. Is she alone? You see what I'm saying?
All right, so, so Reggie, that's the other guy that was supposed to be here. He's the one that called the dog catcher on us, right? So after the fact, Reggie, Reggie was supposed to be here on our behalf, but since this was taking too long, that's why he left. And he's the one that lives right next door to us. He's the one that called the dog catcher twice. He, he knew, he knows that his dogs bark, you know what I mean? So he just, his issue was them barking, you know what I mean? But then after he realized that dogs are gonna bark, you know what I mean? He, he started doing different things, we started doing different things, you know what I mean? So he, he, he knows when we pull in, like this morning we was talking, I had four dogs out front and they didn't even bark at him. You know what I mean?
So, so I, my dog, my dog gets the dog behind me barking.
Yeah.
He walks along, along the fence, and I'm the one that put up the privacy fence. He walks along the fence, mm, and then she goes snake, snake crazy, okay? And she gets in trouble. And he just probably laughs and walks back to the porch.
Right.
My point is, they're dogs, like we all said, they're, they're, they're animals, okay? People act stupid when they want to.
Absolutely.
So controlling the dogs is, is an issue with 13 of them. That's, that's a lot of dogs. So I'm trying, we're trying to figure out a way to resolve this.
Right, I mean.
And we've never had anyone come to us, I mean, you're not the first ones to come to us with more than four dogs. We've never had this many.
Right.
And while they're itty bitties, that means that they're gonna live longer. Because the smaller the dog, the longer they live.
And we take care of them.
Understood. And I didn't say you didn't.
I know, I know.
But, but the, the smaller they are, the longer they live. So yes, one of the conditions that's already in your package is when they cross the rainbow bridge, you're not allowed to get anymore.
Right.
I understand that. But you got a lot of dogs.
Right.
And that's where the concern is coming.
But if you, like you would come to my house, you wouldn't even know that I had 13 dogs, like, you know what I mean? Like you wouldn't even, like my house don't stink, my yard's not, you know, got dog poop in it, you know what I mean? It's just, yeah, our dogs are taken well care of, like really. Like, you know, they eat better than we do sometimes, you know what I mean? You know, I go through like 120 pounds of dog food a month. You know, you know what I mean? Yeah. Yeah. Like they're, they're well taken care of. They get groomed, you know what I mean? It's not like they, they're, they're taken care of. They get bath once a week, twice, one, once every two weeks. Yeah, it's like, you know what I mean? Taken to the groomers, yeah, like we spend a lot of money on our dogs. A lot of money. But we didn't even know about this SPCA. We never even knew about that until a few weeks ago.
The SPCA is on Holland Road near Dam Neck.
Right.
That's where the Virginia Beach one is.
Right.
I don't know how the Chesapeake one does. Bobby came from the north of SPCA.
Right.
So they're all over, but since you live in Virginia Beach, I would talk to them about getting, getting your animals spayed and neutered. Because that's, that's the first thing. Number one, it lowers, it lowers diseases, it lowers illnesses, you know, it's good for the animal anyway. You said you're not going to breed them.
Right, we're not, yeah. Yeah, like we, like, so we never knew about the SPCA. Like we just found that out a few weeks ago. So now that we know, you know what I mean, it's, it's in the works, you know what I mean? It's just, ain't nothing gonna happen overnight, you know what I mean? If it could, we already had it done, you know what I mean? Believe that.
Adam Chair?
I'm gonna tell you, my heart breaks for you.
Could we call the question?
It, it really does. It, it breaks for you, so I'm, I'm gonna let somebody else.
Thank you. Commissioner Anderson?
Yes, I'd like to call for a motion for denial of the application.
Is there a second?
Second.
So there's a motion on, on the floor for denial from Commissioner Anderson, seconded by Commissioner Plumley. Is there any further discussion?
We've been here a long time. I'll speak very briefly. My heart goes out to you, it really does. I honestly believe that you're wonderful pet owners and you love those pets and you didn't know when you bought the house that there were regulations. But when I sit up here, I try to apply the law equally to everyone. And if I allowed you to have 13 dogs, and then what if all your neighbors wanted to have 13 dogs? You, you see the issue. So I'm sorry, but I will support this motion to deny.
Commissioner Plumley? No, sorry. Commissioner Camp?
I'll just make the point that earlier today, we spent a great deal of time talking about city resources in the inspection area. And a solution that requires more inspections to accommodate something that is this far out of our normal standards is one of the reasons why I can't support this.
Thank you. Commissioner Mouch? There's no further discussion. By a recorded vote of nine to one, item number 19, Bradley Anetti Kane, has been recommended for denial. Our next item is item 21 for George Luizou. Thanks for hanging in there with us.
Good evening.
Hello. Almost.
Oh, my goodness, yeah. Anyway, my name is George Luizu and I wanna thank the planning staff for recommending approval for this application. Anyway, but this is the address five zero three three Admiral Wright Road, which is in the corridor of Wichita Road by Town Center. And I understand this, um, area zone, um, I want, and, uh, I understand the city has future plans for this area for more than just what we have at this time. So, um, but in the meantime, since I purchased this property, I do have to pay property tax and I need to find something to do with it while the city has big plans for this area. So, um, we are applying for a, um, bulk storage for this site. And, uh, the tenant is a national company. And it's been hard by the city, uh, this time to do, uh, work for the railroad to clean the debris for, uh, for the city. So it's, it is an international company. And I did propose to, um, put in a chain link fence, since that's what's all around this area. And I have pictures that as of two months ago, there's a, a property owner that did install six-foot chain, chain link fence with barbed wire, a couple blocks down the road. So, but anyway, I understand that, uh, being a bulk storage, maybe we're putting a, a private fence would be more desirable. And I did recommend a wood fence, um, with some landscape being in front of it. And, um, I think the planning came back with vinyl or composite material, which pricing that is three times as much as a wood privacy fence. And I feel that if we do landscaping in front of it, you won't be able to see the wood fence to start with. So I will still, uh, recommend for the planning to agree with a, a wood fence, which is, uh, more, uh, cost effective for the use. And being interim use, not, uh, I understand that they approved it for no longer than five years for this site, which I'm, I'm okay with that. So I will still feel that a wood fence would be appropriate to accommodate this use. And then the other thing that, um, the city planning recommended is there is a street sign right now on this site, which I understand is not part of the use, but usually when I, I apply for, uh, to add a building to the site, I understand the sign, if it's taller, they would, the city would recommend to lower it. And I'm okay with that, but right now, this is, has nothing to do with the use of this property, this bulk storage. So the sign, even though it's got a name on a, on it from the prior owner, I did recommend to remove the letters and keep the sign as it is, uh, for future development or whatever we need to do to this property. So, uh, that's another cause that I feel it wouldn't be necessary if we're, this use is not for forever, it's an interim use. So I don't think the sign has anything to do with, uh, you know, interim use of bulk storage right now. So that's my.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, any questions?
Yes, any questions for the applicant?
Uh, thanks for coming down. Um, what you're, uh, assuming, yeah, that we're gonna, yeah, the, the whole plan for that area is gonna be redevelopment, so.
Correct.
So what I'm hearing is you're hopefully going to be selling your property to a developer. So that's why you wanna spend less money on the fencing?
Yes, correct. Yeah, I'm mostly, I'm, uh, I own a few properties in that area. I could be the developer at this, you know, down the road. We don't know yet. But, um, right now in this area, I don't know if whoever is in that part, but we're hosting so many homeless people in this corridor that a, a fence is a must for everything in that area to eliminate the use, which I'm all for it. I'm not against that, so. But I, we're just trying to keep the cost down to be able to put somebody there, uh, for, for the time being. And then for future uses, I'd be more than glad to exercise taking signs down, taking whatever we gotta do to accommodate that area, yeah.
Commissioner Beiler?
Hi, welcome. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you. I am the planning commissioner for that area. And I'm excited about the growth. And I'm excited to hear you say you may be the developer. I would love to see you develop a mixed-use building on this site now. Do it now. The city is spending millions of dollars. The state is spending millions of dollars to improve this area. And every time we backtrack and do something like a bulk storage, we're, we're hurting the value of all of your parcels in that area and we're delaying our project. So I personally will not support a five-year bulk storage there. Now, I'm, I might be persuaded to do a two- or a three-year bulk storage, but I will not support five years. And I wish you'd develop it now because that's where we're headed. And I wanna be part of that exciting future with you.
Thank you for that, yes. And it, it would, my goal is to assemble a few more properties there because some of them are, uh, is requiring me to, um, be, you know, as you can see the yellow, that's already what I have accomplished, uh, owning. So here is another property that is right next to this property. So if I don't inquire that, it's gonna keep me from, uh, developing this area. So, um, I'm missing this parcel. So I would need a little bit more time to be able to, uh, be able to, uh, inquire this property to have more, uh, you know, area to be able to build something substantial. So, um, I've been there for almost fifteen years and I understand your frustration and my frustration. But right now, um, I do wanna give you a copy of this because it's important that you do know that I am working with the city. Can I give you this?
Sure.
This is what we're facing right now, uh, on this side. And, um, and this is all the violations that you will see in the area.
So, my fellow commissioners, I'm looking at pictures of homeless people.
So.
Yeah, right.
Anyway, uh, believe me, I'm here to accommodate this area and I'm all for the city. But, you know, I'm also, uh, looking at my, uh, expenses here. Uh, have to deal with homeless, paying property tax on a half, half a million dollar property. I need some kind of income because this is, it's, I hate to say, but this is a five or ten-year, I don't think we're even close to even doing anything in this area less than five years, so. I, I think the, the building there, it put us behind five years, so that would, fortunately, it's, it's putting the city a little bit backwards than forward if we are planning to do something in that area. So. Uh, yeah, I, I don't even know what the city planning approve. I'm, I'm not sure if it's three or five years. Whatever it is, I take whatever you guys recommend. But the reason I'm here and right now is to see if you were okay to go with the fence.
Mr. Luizu, can I just get clear with you? Because I just, I'm trying to clear up what your request is because there's what's written in front of us and then what you're saying right now, so.
Correct.
Just to be clear, there, on the plan, it shows shrubbery.
Yes.
Uh, along the, the roadside.
Yes.
You would install that, is that correct? Or are you saying you do not want to install?
No, no, I do.
Okay. So, may, may I finish? So I'm correct that you will have the shrubbery along the street sides?
Correct.
Then you're asking that the vegetation requirement to the south and the east, that that be removed and not be required?
Uh, on the south side, I'd be more than glad to do it because it's a property that I own also, yes.
Okay, so the south side, but not the east side, is that fair?
Yeah, the east side is, is the property that is already in.
Understood. I'm just wanting to make sure what your request is.
Correct.
And then you want to have fencing that is wood fencing?
Yes.
Is, is that fair? And is that shown on the plan? I'm trying to find that.
It should be on the plan, yes.
Okay.
So.
Six foot, okay. So that would be a wood fence is the request that you're making?
Yes, and, and I would assume, assume the shrubbery.
There we go. And let me finish, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then you do not wanna have a sign? You don't wanna remove the sign?
Right.
That's your request? Okay, I wanna make sure I understand exactly what you're asking us to consider.
Sure, and I would assume the shrubbery would not be that low. Where the company is a tree company, I will make sure that they put something substantial that it would prefer. You won't be able to see the wood fence.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Camp?
Yes, sir, thank you for your time and for your explanation. Obviously, you have a piece of paper there that you sort of waved, but we haven't seen. And I'm not asking to see it. But this is the first I've understood the bigger context of what you're trying to do.
Yes.
In just a couple sentences, are you generally looking to acquire the block that would go back to Cleveland Street?
Correct.
All right. That's what I, I mean, we're twenty feet away, I couldn't see.
I'd be more than glad to show.
It's fine. So, and can you give us some idea? Are you halfway there in terms of what you own?
Well, yes, so far, I, I own the block from the Boulevard to Admiral and then I'm a couple.
Okay.
I'm almost there.
So would it be fair to say that you have a substantial investment in this vision of yours?
Yes.
Okay. And it is your assessment, because you do understand the market, you've been there fifteen years, you've been working on this vision, that it may take you five years or so to be in a position to really put this together?
Yes.
I mean, the economy, withstanding and what have you? Okay. Thank you for giving us this vision because it helps us understand the timeline. We had another one in this area recently that was not involved in the future vision. They wanted to stay and do a legacy business. And now I'm learning that's not you, that you are part of the future.
Yes, I am.
Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion? We'll entertain a motion.
I, I have a motion to prove the application to allow the sign to remain, to put up wood fencing, um, as was shown, and that, um, there would not be requirement for vegetation along the east side. Those, those were the three changes. This is, um, an interim approval. And I'm making this motion because I believe while these plans are important as they're coming on, that it's also important that people can pay their bills and survive with some business in the interim. So thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Costin. Any further discussion? We have a motion for approval from Commissioner Plumlee, seconded by Commissioner Costin. The vote is open. By a recorded vote of nine to one, item twenty-one, George Luizu, has been recommended for approval. Our next and final item is item twenty-four, J E and J K L T D L L C. Hello?
Hi, Jim Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, for being here today.
At half one.
Save the best for last.
I got a four and a half hour commute. Yeah.
Well, since you stayed this long, you win.
Prove it, let's go, I'm ready.
Is there anyone here objecting? There is someone here. You, you may wanna wait and address the, the points that are raised unless you wanna present initially.
What do I present?
You're gonna let the speakers, is that what?
We're just looking to do a short-term rental at, at this location. The only condition that I, I have is number nineteen. I'd like to see if I can get that removed. And the reason for that, it's, it says it's a structural inspection that we, needs to be done every three years for exterior, um, stairways, decks, porches, and balconies. There's no exterior stairways, decks, porches, or balconies at this property. And if it stays in there, the way I'm reading this, I'm gonna have to pay to have an engineer say there are no stairways, balconies, or porches every three years. So it just makes sense to remove it.
That's a very interesting take on that.
Very much so. I'm gonna recognize that.
I think the attorney would agree.
Okay.
That requirement's codified in our ordinance anyways, so, you know, the commission.
It doesn't have to be a condition.
With that condition.
But we would only require the inspections if there were, in fact, exterior deck stairs. So it's, it would only be if you had those items. We wouldn't require.
That's not what it says. It says I will do it every three years.
If you have them, but you don't, so we wouldn't require.
Okay, it doesn't say if I have them. It just says I will do it. So why not take it out?
Do we have clarification on that? It would not be required of this property because it does not have any existing outdoor exterior stairways, decks, et cetera. But I was just making the point that that language is also codified in our ordinance. So I think it's just up to the commission on how you'd like to handle that request. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll, we'll discuss.
Okay.
Do we have any, no, don't sit down yet. Do you have any questions for the applicant?
Well, I just wanted to follow this trail. If I understood it right, that if we did what the applicant is asking us, it doesn't really have any effect because this very same wording is in the ordinance. Right? So whether it's applied or not applied, how it's interpreted, taking it out of the condition doesn't change the fact that it's in the ordinance. And so what I was trying to get back to, to the applicant is saying, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
But taking it out here won't take it out the other place it sits.
Oh, I understand.
We don't have that power.
Right.
And so instead of making us jump through that hoop, it's still gonna be there anyway for you. But your point is well taken on drafting the ordinance.
Yeah, well, it says I will do it. And I can't agree to it if I don't, I mean, I, I have to agree to it. That means I gotta pay for it to somebody to say we don't have those things.
If there are no structures, the staff would not recommend or require that a structural safety report be filed if they don't exist.
Makes sense.
Right, so we're, you're not gonna have to do it, Mr. Kelly? Is that correct?
Ma'am.
Yeah, you, you're not gonna have to do that, sir. Like, if you don't have that as part of your property, you're not gonna have to do that.
Okay, that's not how I read it, but okay.
Commissioner Mouch, do you have a question?
No, I don't think so. I would be perfectly fine pulling it out. It, it is redundant and the ordinance. And, and then if what we just approved today gets approved by city council, it's gonna change anyways. So I, I don't, I don't have.
No, but I just wanna follow the rules.
If it makes him more comfortable.
Says I have to do it.
We appreciate that.
If it makes him more comfortable, I'm fine taking it out. But it'll, it's gonna get changed anyways if city council approves what we just approved, so.
All right, well, why don't, if you would kindly just go sit, just go sit down and then we'll have our next speaker and then you can come back.
Our one and only speaker is Mark Chase.
Hello. Could you please state your name for the record?
My name is Mark Chase. Good to be here. I appreciate y'all giving me some time. I've been an owner of Seacrest Condominiums for the last thirteen years. Excuse me, and I've been treasurer for the past eleven years. Seacrest is a sixteen-unit condo at Twenty-first Street and Arctic Avenue. It's nearly sixty years old. One studio, eleven one-bedroom, and two four-bedroom units comprise the complex. There's a small parking lot with small spaces. And that's it, as far, we have a small, four-machine laundry, otherwise that, that's, we have no more other amenities. STRs are controversial, you, you all certainly know that. I feel that the bad has outweighed the good. And I've watched a lot of things. I had, I'm happy, happy to live in a very nice neighborhood, very humble home. Had gunshots a block and a half from my house a year and a half ago. Fifty-fifth Street and Holly Avenue, Holly, Holly Road. It was an Airbnb. And as you know, only a couple spots in the R five, our districts are allowing new STRs. Seacrest has, our bylaws allow for weekly rentals, weekly rentals minimum during the summer months of June, July, and August. The rest of the months are monthly minimum. We're not really set up for STRs. Some owners in the past, a number of years ago, did do some weeklies. And we had a lot of the bad stuff that comes along. We had, uh, noise, rules violations, open air fires, theft, sneaking in extra people, and more. We don't need to go anywhere beyond our bylaws. Couple of residents close to this unit have already said they, they are against it. I don't know what else to say except that, that, again, the bad has outweighed the good. We've experienced that at Seacrest. And to me, we already have a compromise here. Because our owners can do weekly rentals for three months a year. And, and to bring the, the possible negatives on us and stuff that we've already seen in the past, it just doesn't make very much sense to me. We have a compromise in place for owners that wanna take advantage of the summer season. We're not really set up, we have no security, we don't have an office. Very small, old, very quiet, easygoing complex. And this would bring on, this would open the door to a whole lot of other things. And I don't think it would raise our property values, I think it would lower our property values. We have residents who've been there many, many years. So I oppose the application and I oppose any future applications to allow short. So I oppose the application, and I oppose any future applications to allow short-term rentals at Seacrest Condominiums. I hope you'll agree, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here today.
Do you have any questions?
I do, yes.
Commissioner Plumley.
Sir, so are there currently any short-term rentals going on inside the Seacrest community?
No, sir. We had, it's been a number of years since someone did. Everything now has been long-term rentals. Over time, and we have, one owner owns five out of 16, one owner owns three out of 16, and I own, and we've had, we've only had two ownership changes in the past 11 years. So very.
So the answer is there hasn't been a short-term rental there? That's.
We haven't, and not for a number of years, and when we did, we had problems.
Yeah.
And I hate to bring that on us again. And again, we have some that are allowed already.
You have some, I'm sorry, what was?
Well, we have weekly rentals allowed in June, July, and August.
Weekly rentals, but not short-term rentals, like overnight?
Not, no, no, sir.
Okay.
And that would bring on another can of worms to us. I think we already have everything in place. It's been six years in place that way.
I understand, thank you very much.
So I think it was something for everybody.
Yes. Commissioner Beiler.
Yes, ma'am.
So, the condo rules are separate from the city. So even if the city issues this, because we try to treat everyone fairly across the board.
I understand.
And it appears that this one would be eligible for issuing short-term rental application. So if we approve it, your condo association can still amend your bylaws to say no short-term rentals, if they want. Or they can still say, well, it has to be weekly, it can't be two days, it can't be three days. I mean, there are separate governances, and really, I feel like your complaint is more with your condo association than it is with the city.
No, I'm perfectly happy. I don't want to do any changes to our bylaws, but if you're saying that if you approve an override, and we can go back and say no STRs, well, we already have our bylaws saying weekly minimum in the summer and monthly otherwise.
So what the city says doesn't change what your condo says. So just because the city says you could do short-term rentals, that doesn't mean that a homeowner can go in and rent for the weekend, because you have yours. Now, if someone went in and rented for the weekend, that would not violate a city ordinance, but it would violate a condo regulation.
Right.
So the condo regulation can take steps per the condo rules to retain counsel and make the homeowner pay for the lawyer, and do whatever you have to, to say you're in violation and correct that violation.
Well, I appreciate that, but to approve this application would say it's okay to violate our bylaws, right?
No.
No?
We're not addressing your bylaws. We're not saying that your homeowner can violate your bylaws. We're definitely not saying that.
Okay. But, well, this would give the homeowner, the city's approval to violate our bylaws, no? Am I missing something?
So the city has ordinances, okay? So in accordance with the city's ordinances, the owner can do something. But if you've got bylaws for your condominium association, that is a totally separate organization. We have nothing to do with that.
Okay, so then if it's approved, the owner could, per the city, do something that we would have to fight legally?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Mouch, and then Commissioner Camp.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate you sticking around for so long. It has been a day.
It's been a day. Aren't they all like this?
I want to make sure that you are heard and feel comfortable with, maybe not however the result goes, but the understanding of why the result may be the way it is. So we have to go through a series of things where we, what we are able to look at, and one thing we're not able to look at is bylaws for a specific condo association. We go by the city regulations, and so they may conflict with what they're saying with each other, but we're not able to take into account the bylaws of a civic league or of an association. So we only get to look and say what the city is saying is allowable in this area, and right now, there's an overlay that sits over top of this that says that short-term rentals are acceptable. That doesn't mean we have to vote for it, but what it does mean is that we're not able to take into account the bylaws that your condo association or a civic league has in place to weigh in for our decision. So with what Commissioner Beiler was saying is that if it does contradict, you're able to take actions outside of what we're doing now. But also to that, your condo association is saying that short-term rentals can happen within a short period of time, but nobody within that association, or the, yeah, the condo association, is actually able to do that legally without first coming to us and then getting a conditional use permit to have a short-term rental.
So, I'm sorry, so if the owner was then to say, I'm coming to you because it says summer weeklies, and I want to do summer, he would still need to come to you to get permission to do summer weeklies?
Yes, sir.
I guess, and we had a meeting about this, our own condo meeting, I guess that's my rub, is that, and I've emailed the people, everybody involved, saying, you already have, I thought they could do it anyway, without city approval, because we've been doing it in the past. But I'd say we already have the permission to do that.
Yeah.
So to go beyond that, is that's the rub I have with this.
I think, I think possibly for maybe some education offline that could help to understand what can and can't be done as far as short-term rentals are concerned.
I understand, it just seems counterintuitive that the first thing would be, to me, would be, look at the condo docs for that particular condo, but I understand that that's not the system. Okay.
Yeah. I hope that brings a little clarity.
Well, that's why I oppose the application. There's already some involved, that's allowed. To do this, would go beyond, and I think would open the door to more of that in a small complex that it doesn't fit very well.
Yeah.
So, again, thank you for your time.
Hang on a sec.
One more question, Commissioner Camp.
Yes, sir.
So let me try this a different way. If you had to ask your mom and dad for something, you could ask mom, and she'd say yes or no, but you still got to go ask dad.
Go ask dad.
Right? And you need both of them to agree. Now, what happened here, as I read the staff report, is this was a grandfathered property, so that the rules that you had in your condo association, they were good to go. You didn't have to ask both parents, your rules applied, but they lapsed. Nobody used that for two years, and so then it came under the city's new ordinance. Now you have to ask both mom and dad, the condo association and the city, in order to do this. So the applicant has come forward to ask one of those parties, are you good with this? And as Commissioner Mouch said, there are only certain things we're allowed to work with in coming to our yes or no. What he has to do with the other parent is between the two of you, we're not allowed to go there. So as we deal with the things we're allowed to deal with here, I want you to understand how this is working now. Does that help you some, sir?
I understand the reality of it, yes, sir.
Yeah, and not that you're happy, but that you understand, because my point is to help understand what's going on here.
I think it'll cause us some future things between mom and dad.
Yes, sir. I have no further questions for the applicant.
Thank you.
Or for the speaker.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming out today. Mr. Kelly, you have an opportunity to come back if there's anything more you'd like to say as a rebuttal.
Thank you. Let me see, Mark's a friend of mine, okay? We agree on 99% of everything, and I attend all the board meetings with him. This was brought up at the last meeting that we had a couple of months ago, and what started this is my long-term tenant left. And actually, I got another long-term tenant in here, because this takes forever to get this thing through. But I was thinking at the time, I said, now's the time to check about doing this, so I have other options. And I, I will disagree with Mark on, I believe this, I'm an investor. I own several properties in Virginia Beach, Florida, and all that. This will be managed by Vacasa, which is one of the biggest management companies in the country, so it'll be professionally managed if I go that way, which I haven't decided yet, I just want the option.
Sure.
Okay? The other thing is, at the board meeting, when Mark brought this up, was the board president actually supported it, and Alexa had him write a little letter saying, I guess you guys got it up there, saying he supports it. Mark expressed that he was not going to support it, which I respect, no problem there at all. I mentioned that, exactly what you said, I said, I'll get this here, then I'm going to approach the board and say, can we change the bylaws? I guess that's it.
We appreciate that, thank you so much.
So this is an option thing, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, I did short-term rentals, I do them in Florida all the time now, and I've done them here for 20 years until you all started the rules, and I stopped them about 10, 15 years ago, to deal with that. But I want to look at the option possibly in the future.
We appreciate that, thank you so much. Ms. Brookhold.
Yes, I just wanted to point out, there is one other short-term rental permitted within this condo unit, which is unit five.
Okay.
Yeah, at least talking to my tenants, I'm the one that owns the three, Mark said it was five and three. I don't know if this is true, but last night I did inspections on my properties there, and they, one of the people says, oh, you're going to do like the other properties that do in here. So I don't know if that's true or not, but they, she mentioned that there was others that are doing short-term. They don't have a permit.
Okay.
I don't know if that's true.
Time will tell. Okay, thank you very much. Any additional question?
One other quick question. And you understand if you don't use this in two years, you'll be in the same boat again.
I understand. I understand.
Okay. At this time, we'll entertain either further discussion or a motion.
I move that we approve.
Okay, we have a motion for approval. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Schoonover. Is there any further discussion? Vote is open. By a recorded vote of nine to zero, item 24, JE and JK LTD LLC, has been recommended for approval. He had to leave. That concludes our meeting today. We are adjourned. Thank you.